And we're live.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Our apologies for our closed session running just a few minutes over. So sorry about that, but good to see everybody. Welcome to our May 10th Auburn City Council meeting, regular session. We do have nothing to report out of closed session, so we'll move right into our regular agenda. Amy, would you please call roll?
Sure. Councilmember Berlin.
I am here.
Amara.
Present.
Dowden Calviou.
Present.
Riddell Harris.
Here.
And Mayor Spockley.
Here. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If there was any, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. First up on our agenda is mayor proclamations, and we do have a proclamation this evening. I will go ahead and read. Give me one moment here. Sorry about that. There we go. And oh, Amy, I'm sorry. You've got it up on the screen. This is a proclamation declaring Auburn Wallop preparedness month. I'll go ahead and read through this. And then councilmember Lance asked to speak on this item. So as soon as I finish the reading, we'll turn it over to councilmember Lance. Whereas due to the extreme dry conditions across California this year, another challenging wildfire season is anticipated. Whereas last year, California experienced six of the largest and most destructive wildfires in state history. More than four million acres burned across the state, more than the 2017 and 2018 fire seasons combined. Whereas Auburn continues to focus on wildfire preparedness, prevention, and response through the implementation of the city's Wildland Urban Air Force Strategic Plan. Whereas in 2020, the Auburn City Fire Department responded to over 2,000 emergency incidences incidents. Their efforts saved an estimated 4.1 million in property in our community. Last year, Auburn firefighters cleared 134 acres of brush within the city, as well as supported 188 acres of fuel reduction performed within the Auburn shaded fuel break. The Greater Auburn Area Fire Safety Council works to promote fire safe practices within the community through outreach, education, and program development, and identifies ways to protect the community from wildfire. The Fire Safety Council has worked to establish six nationally recognized firewise communities with eight additional neighborhoods working towards recognition. Our community can prepare for wildfire season to help prevent loss of life and property by taking steps such as ensuring adequate defenseable space around homes and buildings, making homes more fire resistant, and preparing for an evacuation. Community members can learn more about all aspects of wildfire safety and preparedness by visiting readyforwildfire.org. The website is there. Now, therefore, I'm at Spockley, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the city council to hereby proclaim May as wildfire preparedness month in Auburn, and hereby encourage all residents and businesses to increase their awareness and preparedness for the impending wildfire season. Thank you, Chief, for all your hard work. I'll go ahead and turn it over to councilmember Berlin.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you taking the time to do the proclamation. And I'll note, this is the first time that we've had a full month to to celebrate or stress the need for us all to be prepared. So I appreciate you doing that. And I just wanted to take the quick opportunity to note the work the Greater Auburn Area Fire Safe Council has done over the last couple of years. I know we've got some members that are watching right now, and we have, those of you who don't know, the Fire Greater Auburn Area Fire Safe Council makes up an area beyond just the city of Auburn. Includes parts of Bowman, as well as Newcastle and Penrin. So there's quite a bit of unincorporated. And the council is made up of four appointed members by this body and four members by the Platte County Board of Supervisors. And the Fire Safety Council has worked quite a bit to try to coordinate efforts with the different fire departments, with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, but more importantly, really trying to motivate our neighborhoods to become firewise. Looking around the table, or the room here, I think all five council members actually live within a firewise community or are in one of those that are being developed. So I know the five, the four others of you work towards this as well in your your neighborhoods. But I just want to take this opportunity to stress that we have a person dedicated as a coordinator to help make it very easy for neighborhoods beyond ours to become firewise. I had the opportunity to visit the Grand Oaks Firewise Community. They had a workday out there last weekend, though it was a small but mighty team. In fact, the between the police department that came by and the fire department, there were more public servants than there were residents at one period of time. But it still emphasized the commitment our city has with our community. And so appreciate the mayor making this proclamation, and definitely would encourage anybody who's interested in learning more to go to the website that was shown and/or attending one of our Greater Auburn Area Fire Safety Council meetings. So I have more on fire stuff, but I'll hold that until the end of the meeting for our fire plan discussion with the bureau. So thank you again for Mr. Mayor for bringing this one forward.
Great. Thank you very much. This is Chief. Present. Just want to give him the opportunity to say a couple of words if he'd like to.
Sure thing. I'm bringing him into the meeting now.
Good evening, Chief. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I figured I'd ask if you wanted to say a couple of words or not. We can move on.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mayor Spockley. I appreciate you taking the time to recognize this month as wildfire preparedness. We continue to message out to our community the things that we're hoping that they'll join us with as we continue to try to keep our community safe. So for that, I'm grateful for your spending your time, bringing attention to this important issue.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, Amy is bringing in. I wanted to introduce to the council Frank Utavalli. He is the chair now of the Greater Auburn Area Fire Safe Council. And so Amy, just joining him to the meeting, but just thought that would be appropriate for us to let him make a quick acknowledgement.
Hi, everybody. Appreciate. Thanks for all the work you're doing. And yeah, on behalf of the council, we're very, very happy to be invited here tonight. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much, Frank. Appreciate all the hard work that you put into the council, and obviously, all the other volunteers on the council, as well as our very councilmember Lance. So thank you all. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the approval of our agenda. This is a time set aside for the council members and/or the public to ask for removal, postponement, or change to the listed segments of the agenda items. The agenda will be approved by a rule called the council. Any of the council members have any changes they'd like to see on the listing of the agenda? Amy, any members of the public have any comments on our agenda this evening?
Did not receive any.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for approval or motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as proposed.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, would you mind calling roll, please?
Councilmember Berlin.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Riddell Harris.
Hi.
And Mayor Spockley.
Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Next on the agenda is our consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with a rule called vote. There will be those separate discussions on these items unless persons request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion in separate action. Any item removed will be considered after the motion to approve the consent calendar. And as typical, I will ask our city manager, Mr. Dunleavy, to give us a quick overview rundown of our consent calendar items.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a couple of items. Item number one is approval of the debt management policy. I think is the council, what you know today, Standard and Poor's gave us a debt rating today, double A plus. And that is phenomenal for a city our size. It will save in the in the cost of issuance and potentially in the overall terms. The debt policy does really five main things. One, it establishes that we have a sound financial infrastructure, that we have evaluations of both our short and long term debt. It says that we're going to do capital management, capital improvement planning, that we, the city, will do planning, and that we have the proper internal controls as far as all of our debt goes. This debt policy, if approved, will go into our official statement that serves as a real foundational element. At the end of the day, they look at our budget, overall management, our pension policy, our debt management policy. So it all goes into that. Item number two on the consent calendar is a job description for an economic and planning manager and the associated salary schedule. Item three is a policy for both employees and elected officials, health and welfare benefit policies. It outlines the three areas that are available for benefits and reimbursement within the city. Item number four are the warrants for April of this year. Item five is the street resurfacing project and the word of contract. This essentially, at the end of the day, if we were going to all of our contingency is about 170 or $370,000 to go towards resurfacing. Our staff did what I think was an outstanding job on getting this ready for summer. And finally, item number six on the consent calendar. This is a transfer of money from our low carbon transit operations program. Essentially, this is us moving some money around. We had the, in the budget, a program called Connect Card, which really has not caught on within the region. We're moving the money from that program into our capital purchase items, which would go towards one of our new electric buses that we will be purchasing. Conversely, that frees up other money, TDA and LTF. And that is the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, John, for that. I'm going to go anywhere that I saw hands pop up, and I'll start with councilmember Lance.
I'd like to remove item number five, please.
Item number five is an item I wanted to remove as well. So thank you, Councilwoman Don Calviou.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number two.
Item number two. And Councilwoman Riddell Harris.
Sorry to add to the agenda. I wanted to pull number three.
All right. Amy, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Hearing none, any additional discussion from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve consent calendar minus items two, three, and five. Amy.
Sure. Really quick, before I call roll, just a matter of agenda order. We did have the COVID report before the consent calendar that involves the business associations and the Chamber of Commerce. And so, Mr. Mayor, you can choose when we take that, maybe after the consent calendar. So just wanted to make that note.
I'm going to pay for that.
Okay, so roll calling for the consent calendar excluding two, three, and five. So councilmember Berlin.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Riddell Harris.
Hi.
And Mayor Spockley.
Yes. And my apologies for the COVID update. Didn't show up on my print here. So my apologies. We'll do that right after the consent calendar, but we do have three items that were pulled. We'll go through those in order. First up, economic planning manager and salary schedule. Alice, did you pull that one?
I did. I just had a couple of quick questions. When I read through the spec, you know, there's a significant amount of work that's related to the Auburn Airport. I know part of it is Auburn Airport Industrial Park, and then also the Auburn Business Park. And I understand there is a correlation with the economic development activities that occur at those two locations, to the activities that would occur citywide. So I understand the relationship there. And I think that we've provided significant, sufficient qualifications to ensure that we get someone that is well versed in that type of economic development activity. But I also noticed that one of the duties is with regards to the airport master plan, which is a more specified type of a plan. And I'm not opposed to the individual managing that plan, but I think that perhaps the qualifications should somewhere mention that it would be advantageous to have some kind of airport management experience in there. We just don't really talk about that in the knowledge or the experience or the ability sections of the spec itself. But that is going to be a big piece of what they do. And I just think that it would be valuable to have someone that has some of that experience with airports. You will find that our larger airports, like Sack County, for example, they have an economic development director that's tied just to the airport. So someone that even would work for that person or under would be awesome for us because they do economic activities, and they also understand the ins and outs of the airport, which is different in dealing with FAA and things of that nature. It's different than what a general economic development director would be tasked with. So that's really what I just wanted to suggest is somehow that we incorporate a desire for the individual to have some experience working at an airport or in an airport or what have you.
If I might respond to that, the role that this position will have with regards to the airport master plan is very focused, going after the FAA and state funding to implement that plan. They, we have an old, an entire engineering side on the thing. But just to be clear, this position will be going after the money side, and probably very little to do with other than just finding money for the capital improvements to go on out there.
Because I see that we also say that they would be representing the city with key planning agencies and advancement of the plan, and the eventual development of amendments for future plans. So if it really is just with regard to that economic piece, then maybe, John, we could just say, including, you know, or it says including, but maybe we say specifically related to. That would just give me a little bit more comfort because, like you said, there's the technical engineering side of it. And for an individual that reads this, they might think, wow, that this is a, you know, airport master plan is a whole nother animal. And we're not asking them to get into the nuts and bolts of that piece of it. We're just focusing on that economic piece. So I'd like to just maybe clarify that one bullet then, John.
Got it. No problem with that, and we'll do.
That was really, that was all, Mr. Mayor, that I had.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, Amy, do we have anybody from the public who wanted to speak on this item?
We do not.
All right. We'll then close public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I will move by resolution that we adopt the position of planning and economic manager and corresponding salary schedule as amended to incorporate my request as discussed.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Amy, you want to go ahead and call roll, please?
Councilmember Berlin.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Dowden Calviou.
Hi.
Riddell Harris.
Hi.
Mayor Spockley.
Yes. Thank you. Next on our consent calendar is item number three, employee and elected official health and welfare benefits policy.
Of me.
Yep.
Yep. So on the actual, the document, the resolution, I just had a quick comment on the reimbursement of costs. In the general policy, it says the maximum monthly reimbursement shall be limited, et cetera, et cetera. It says maximum monthly. And I know from my experience that healthcare costs sometimes come in big chunks, and that it would be better to have an annual amount rather than a monthly amount. So if there's a big healthcare expense in any particular month, that that would be able to be covered rather than having to have that spread out over several months and trying to recoup those costs monthly, monthly. So I'd like to say that I'd like to propose a change that this be an annual reimbursement, not to exceed an annual amount rather than a monthly amount.
Okay. Thank you. I see hands popping up. I'll go to Councilwoman Don Calviou.
Just a quick question then. So Councilwoman Riddell Harris, do you mean then that we would only reimburse, be reimbursed on an annual basis versus on a monthly?
It's kind of like when you have a health spending account, you can be, you have an annual amount that you can be reimbursed up to, but you can submit receipts whenever you need. So if you were going to have Lasik surgery in February, you could get, you know, most of it paid for in that month of February if you wanted to, but then you wouldn't have any more left for the rest of the year. It's just kind of helpful for people who have larger medical expenses in any particular month versus most medical expenses don't normally hit on a monthly basis. Most of them hit unexpectedly in larger chunks at different parts of the year. So it just makes a little bit easier if you can have an annual amount that you don't exceed rather than a monthly amount.
So put in a, this is Sherry. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're saying have an annual amount in there instead of doing it on a monthly basis. You can get reimbursed on a monthly basis, but you want an annual amount in there from the beginning.
For the, yeah, to not exceed an annual amount of X, and then you can be reimbursed whenever you want throughout the course of the year, just as long as you don't exceed that amount during the whole year.
I hear you. Thank you.
Member, in the policy, can you point us to where in the policy it has that language overall?
Yes, on the second page, it says, general, the very last paragraph says, general policy is the title. And then if you go down to D, it's about halfway down, it says the maximum monthly reimbursement. So I just want to change monthly to annual.
Going down to, I'm sorry, D, letter D?
Yeah, it just has a weird, oh, sorry, not D. Sorry, there's just, it's really just the second sentence. It starts with the maximum monthly. It's under general policy section. It's just the second sentence.
Yeah, I see it here.
It just creates a little bit more flexibility for everyone.
So we'll ask Gary, is there, is there things that you need to look into to make sure that we're still okay with the, with the, you know, the various reports that have been handed down?
So the requirement is that it be not any more than the greatest provided to non sworn. I think if you remove the word monthly from there, that would have that intent. If the staff, more direction adds to when those payments are made, that would, without the word monthly, I still think it meets the requirements of the state law provision. You just can't exceed being paid.
Okay. Sounds like a good change there. Is this related?
Yes. Okay. So, so the actual amount would not change for reimbursement. It's just we would be getting rid of the monthly piece of it. Just saying it's an annual. Yeah. So it still wouldn't exceed the 50% amount. It just wouldn't necessarily have to be in even increments in different months. It would just be over the course of the year.
Thank you.
I think I saw councilmember Lance hand up.
I have the same question as Councilwoman Don Calviou. So I'm good with my question. I guess the only piece that that would raise that I would ask is it may require staff to go back into the program piece, and maybe it's just in our, our, our packet, but where lays out how the program will look. Because it sounds like everybody's intent is still that there is the ability for employees or council members to get monthly reimbursement, but at an annual cap. And so if we take out the word monthly at the bottom in the policy, does it require the word monthly somewhere else to ensure that city staff are directed to allow for a monthly reimbursement as long as they're within their annual cap?
I think I would agree. I'd like to take it back and take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned just with that as well. I understand what Councilwoman Riddell Harris is asking. But I just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, employees and the electeds would have that monthly reimbursement, even though it's capped. So it's almost like you need a monthly reimbursement, and the language would have to read the maximum monthly reimbursement, or, you know, shall not exceed. That language just needs to be adjusted a little bit. We just need to fine tune that piece of it, I think.
No, let us bring it back, and we'll bring it back on the 20th.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we should probably do a motion to continue to date certain?
Motion to continue to the 23rd, you guys said, is the next meeting? Or 24th?
I'll second that.
Correct.
All righty, before we, before we take a vote on this, Amy, do we have anybody from the public that wanted to speak on this item?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public hearing and go ahead.
Can I ask a point of discussion here?
Sure.
Is there a reason why, and we've got a lot of stuff on our agenda, but that during the meeting, city staff can't take back what we just discussed? Because it sounds like we potentially may only need to change a sentence. Is there a reason why we couldn't just have staff propose that edit and then bring it back later in the meeting so that we can get this, get this finalized since it's been in the works for a while now?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. So if you want, I want you to put it on the back into the agenda.
That's just my, I mean, there's already a motion on the floor. So I'm just throwing that out as a discussion. I am of, you know, you probably need to take action on that motion. But I would ask that we, as John said, we just push it back for city staff to bring back that sentence to us.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Or just continue, amend your motion to continue to the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my previous motion and put in a new motion. Does that work?
I don't even know if you, you can just, I mean, technically, you should vote on the motion that's on the table. We just would deny it, and then we wouldn't even, then Matt would just say, without objection, we'll, we'll deal with this at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Technically, under Robert's rules, we would vote on your motion, we'll deny the motion, and then Mayor Spockley can say, without objection, we'll, we'll address this after, at the end of the agenda.
But, but the intent is that that's going to give Sherry and maybe Gary enough time to kind of go through the document and make sure we've found all the places that we needed to tweak. That's, that's the intent here. So if that's going to be too much, somebody needs to, Sherry?
I would like to say something because right now, this is for employees and council elected officials. And at this time, employees currently have the monthly amount. So I want to make sure that we understand it correctly, that if, for example, I'm just going to throw out numbers, if it was $1,000 for the annual, and in March, let's say, you use that $1,000, obviously, you can't have anymore. But what if you were to leave? That's my concern because this also affects employees as well. Yeah. And they would have already used that annual amount, but they won't be with the city for the year.
I don't think there's anything pressing on this particular item that needs to be dealt with tonight. Let's give staff time to go through it, scrub it. Gary can look at it and make sure that we've got everything covered because we are covering both electeds and, and city staff. So.
You know, at, at the end of the day, the reality is with this, is that there is the ability to ask for the monthly reimbursement, and there's, there's a cap on that. And if we do have a medical expense that is too much in one month, we can always spread it to the next month. I mean, if we just want to keep the language as is, if the concern is we're not going to have enough to cover that one, we can just spread it out. In fact, that's what I, I was just going to say, that's what I was, was thinking when I spoke with John. I just made a purchase of some, my glasses, which are very expensive because I'm legally blind. And I was going to, to ask for some one month and ask for some the next month, and still be within the confines of the language. Because what I do have a concern with is when we start messing with the employee language, it's tied to MOUs, and then you get into a much, you know, so I respect Councilwoman Harris, what your, what your intent is. But I think, like, when we started.
The 11th month, though.
But you'd, so, but in your instance with the glasses, you should be submitting only receipts for the month that you're in, not for previous months or the months after. So that probably shouldn't be allowed. So if you're, maybe the answer, Sherry, to your question is, you can accrue the money if you don't use it in January and February, then you can use those months on later months, and you can accrue it through the whole year and submit everything in December if you want.
Right.
But, but, and then, and then there's no issue with people who leave. But if, I don't want people to miss out on January through July if they don't have any health expenses, and then they miss out on that half for the second half.
Right. They won't lose it. They would be able to use it. My only concern was if they used it all up in the, you know, by the first six months, and then they leave, they've already used that whole annual amount. In today's world, they would not have received that.
Yeah. So maybe there's a monthly allocation that you accrue over the course of the year that you can, has a max amount.
That's a great amount. That's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay. Daniel, your hands up. Okay. Daniel, your hands up.
Yeah, I guess I just have a question for the city attorney possibly. This is a reimbursement. So if the money is not all fully used and they left mid-year, there's not money that's owed to them because they chose to hold it for the second half of the year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think the concern is using it before it's accrued.
Right.
So used it in the first few months before the year is actually heard. So I think why looking at the language is worthwhile, again, with staff, is that it can't exceed or be any greater. And so we need to double check not just what's in front of us tonight, but also take a look at the underlying documents of what's being provided to other health plans and the like. So I do think it's worth going and taking a look at it and bringing it back.
Okay.
I'm okay with it as proposed myself personally, but if that's the will of the council, then absolutely.
If you want to change the language, that's what I'm suggesting.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Yeah.
I guess the question I have is, as far as HR is concerned, is what Alice is proposing with the glasses expense allowed? Because as far as when I've done medical expenses, you, or expense reimbursement, you have to submit the actual expense for the month that it was accrued, not spread it out over months. So that's a big issue that I'm trying to address.
We don't have a per month. You would not have to do it per month. You just can't, you have the whole year to submit it. It wouldn't matter if you got it, if you got your glasses in January, you could submit it in May, and that would be fine as long as you have the balance available.
So we are accruing it already, and you can submit them, the receipt for as much as you want, as long as you don't exceed the annual amount already. That's how we're currently.
The way, the way that it works right now is they, in the Health and Lou is just a once a month, and they get that and they go. But the way that the other items work, such as vision, you are accruing as the time goes on, and you do have that whole year to use it.
Okay, so as long as this aligns with that, I'm good with it.
Yeah. When I read through that, I, I believe that to be the case myself, so.
Okay.
I've not, I've done these things, but.
Yeah, Councilwoman Amara, I see your hands up.
Oh, I, so where are we?
That's a good question.
Just vote I.
I'm just making sure that that's, that's how this, you were saying that that's not how this has worked in the past. So I'm just trying to make sure that this is how this particular, because when I see a monthly maximum reimbursement, that makes me feel like you only can have that amount in a particular month. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask John to, to advise us if we need to continue this to our next meeting, or if we can move this forward. I, I don't believe we have any pressing item that would require us to move, take action on this tonight. And I'm, I'm more concerned about the language being correct than the various effects that, you know, a small little tweak might have and ripple through some of our other MOUs and things. So is, John, what, what do you recommend here? What would you like to see from the council?
Especially since everybody's kind of split on this right now. You know, honestly, if we could just bring it back, because it, it does affect the employees, it does affect the other MOUs. And I think some clarity on, on how somebody could submit a cumulative request for maybe a couple of months. So, no, we will have this back on the 24th, and it will be pulled.
Okay, great. We tried to do a motion on that before. I think we still have a motion on the table, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I have a motion to move it to the May 24th meeting. Riddell Harris made the motion, and it was seconded by Councilmember Amara.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Amy, for keeping track of us. Would you please go ahead and call, roll, please?
Councilmember Brillant.
Aye.
Amara?
Yes.
Dalton Calvio?
Aye.
Riddell Harris?
Aye.
And Mayor Spockley?
Yes, thank you very much, everybody. Let's move on to item number 500 consent calendar, which is a 2021 Street Surfacing Project Award of Contract. Councilmember Brillant, you pulled that. I also have some questions and, and comments, but I'll let you go first.
Yeah, my questions are relatively simple. Menjol, thank you for bringing this back to us now with our quote. I just wanted to clarify on what was originally brought to the council, these three sections of streets. The first two were, 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 were planned, but the third one was based on funding. And the staff report didn't make it super clear. So I just want to confirm, the third group of streets, Perkins, Catherine, Carolyn, et cetera, those are now in the actual award and will be paved, correct?
That's correct, and the reason for that being that the price in the city received was favorable.
And thank you, thank you for that clarification. And then lastly, I know the city manager and I've had this conversation, but just for the rest of the community, there's something along the lines of a half a million dollars of funding available that we had last fiscal year that we rolled into this fiscal year. John, what's the plan for, for the remainder of those dollars?
Yeah, those dollars, we're just going to keep on rolling them. It's not like use it or lose it. In, in the case of the overlay, this is, is high priority of the council. And if anything, we're just going to be rolling the money back into our capital program. So, yeah, there's a hundred and thirty thousand from the half a million. That will just be rolled into next year. So it will be an ongoing capital expenditure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Menjol, good to see you this evening. Thanks for joining us. You, you and I had an opportunity to, to chat at the, at the DC charging station ribbon cutting. And I was very excited to hear that your bids came in, your numbers came in where they did. Obviously, that means we're going to have more monies for our overlay portion of our roadway maintenance program. So that's really good news. I, I didn't get a chance to look, Menjol, but I, I, I think, I think what the game plan is, is for us to, to soon circle back and put out an RFP for that overlay work. Is that, is my understanding correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. The prices came back at this, at this point, we're, we're very, very happy with these numbers. And with the remainder of the funds and some funds, some additional RSTP funds that are available, you should be seeing something for overlay very shortly.
And this, this would still be classified, Menjol, in, in our current budget, right? I mean, this isn't our, our 2122 budget that we're working towards. This is still in our current budget, correct?
That is correct. That's, that's something that would be used in this fiscal year. The original amount for the year that we had left before we brought this to council was about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And with this coming in at this price point, there is some monies available. And again, the city just got information that there is some additional RSTP funds available that can be put aside solely for roadway work. So I anticipate, you know, once we get this out the door, putting something out to bid shortly, once we know the exact numbers that are left on the table.
Well, again, I want to thank you and congratulate you, and bidding projects in this environment is, is anything but fun. And the fact that you came in so close to your, your engineer's estimates, as well as your contingency calls, is fantastic. So well done to you and your team, Menjol. Really appreciate that. I see Councilwoman Amara's hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Spockley, and thank you, Menjol. You were spot on on the estimate, very good. That's always good for our budget. I'm just hoping, I'm just throwing it out again. I, I'm advocating again for bike lanes. I don't know if this is the time or the place, or if there's opportunity when we're resurfacing to put cat eyes, make safe bike lanes. We are the endurance capital of the world, and I think there are some very wide streets that kids are biking to Skybridge School, and there is really no bike lane there. It's a very wide road, and there's opportunity for that. I would love to see an emphasis while we're resurfacing to be able to accommodate bike lanes and overlay bike lanes that are existing as well. So that's my two cents. But I do appreciate the work you have done and appreciate the bid, and look forward to the work in progress.
Absolutely, thank you. The anticipation is that moving forward, we've got the direction from council that if we're ever doing any roadway work where there's room or opportunity to, you know, put some safety mechanisms in, we certainly will do that. And if there's locations where there's enough room currently to add bike lanes, that is something we will certainly be looking into.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I did just, yes, I just had a, a comment. So thank you very much. I, I appreciate this item. I just want to confirm, I know we're working off the 2013 City Council approved 10-year payment overlay plan, but we are working on additional planning documents, correct? I mean, I know we've got, you know, there are so many streets that need to be dealt with. And, and I, you know, have one particular constituent that contacts me on a regular basis about the fact that his street's never included. And, you know, just, I know there's more work to be done. So we have some additional planning documents that are in the works. Is that correct, John?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, and today's staff, me and Menjol and I talked about the pavement management system and doing a overall condition index, we will be bringing to the council the, the, the RFP that we're going to send out, and that will be a project for the summer.
So when, when will we expect that RFP?
I, I think I can answer that one, John. Staff is pushing this project through the door right now, and the priority is to get that PCI out. Because we don't intend to go into next year's work using the old pavement condition index anymore. So I would say, council should have it within the next month, month and a half. I don't want to, I don't like putting dates to things because sometimes things kind of, you know, spiral out of control, but it's our number one priority, right?
Great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And I very much look forward to that document. So thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Amy, any comments from the public on this particular item on consent?
There is not.
None. Very good. We'll bring it back. Menjol, thank you again, but we'll bring it back to council for motion.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and approve and authorize the transit project manager to execute the construction contract for the 2021 Street Resurfacing Project, not to exceed three hundred thirty-four thousand and a little bit of change, plus a contingency plan as stated in the agenda.
I'll second that.
All righty, Amy.
Councilmember Brillant?
Aye.
Amara?
Yes.
Dalton Calvio?
Aye.
Riddell Harris?
Aye.
And Mayor Spockley?
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. Now, we're going to jump back to the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Update. My apologies to our, our CEO of the Chamber and our members from Old Town and Downtown Business Associations, as Amy's letting folks in. Typically, we'll start with Ms. Weston. Do you want to go ahead with your report?
Sure. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor Spockley. We are just about finished putting up all the structures for the outdoor dining. Thanks to Councilmember Brillant, Amara, and Dalton Calvio. They look fantastic. If anybody's seen Monkey Cat's final product, it is what we wish they all looked like. So congratulations to Monkey Cat on that. I believe we're going to add a little bit more to the ones up the hill on Ninja Sushi and La Herrera, and add some decorations to all of them to make them a little, look as similar as possible to keep consistency among the district. April, Daniel and I were out there today looking at all of them and seeing what we could do, where we had the funds to do it, and how to make them safe and beautiful at the same time. Dedicated Designs has been working on all the websites. They are working diligently to get them all done. G12 has completed their videos and photography for that part of the grant. And they're finishing up their final editing on that, and you should be seeing those shortly. I think that's about it. We've just kind of been tying up loose ends and trying to get ready for the warmer weather with outdoor dining and keeping everyone safe while looking at the June 15th date and trying to figure out what we can do and where we can go. So it's been fun.
Great, thank you very much. We'll jump downtown, or down to Old Town with Christine. Do you have an update for us on the Old Town Business District?
Yes, we have. Just this afternoon submitted a revised plan for Old Town. We were able to source some of the materials that were eluding us based on their cost and found a local company that can provide some barriers for us so that we can entertain a space, common area for seating under shelter to assist our restaurants with additional seating until they can get back to full capacity, which, since we don't know when that is, may be a while.
Great, thank you very much for that report. We'll jump, we'll jump to downtown and see if April has any updates for us.
Just following up on what Jackie said about the shelters, the restaurants are, are very grateful. And they're very aware that outdoor dining, even if we do go to full capacity, outdoor dining is going to be in demand for a very long time. And they're, and they're really loving the shelters, and I think it's going to be a good, a good, you know, a good improvement that we came up with. And I think that, but as we were out there again today, as Jackie said, it, it still is pretty clear, we're, DBA is going to move forward with the request for the one-way down Lincoln Way because it's, it just will be safer. It's, it's, you know, just that thing with people driving down the middle of the, of the, you know, the double yellow line. We just need to make that official, kind of, so it's the one-way. So that's a bet up.
Great, thank you very much, April. Appreciate that. Thank you all for those updates. Really appreciate it. Sorry for skipping over you, but glad you guys hung in there for those reports. All right, we will go ahead and move on to public comment. This is a time provided that the public may speak to the council on any items not on the agenda. Please make your comments brief. The council cannot act on these items, but they will be referred to staff for future consideration. Members of the council will have 30 seconds to speak on items not on the agenda. And because my, oh, no, I got a couple of minutes. I'll start. I did have an opportunity to go and welcome the winners of the AR50 Ultra Marathon into Auburn on Saturday. That was quite a lot of fun. As warm and windy as it was, those first runners who came across that finish line looked like they could run another 50 miles. So quite impressive. That was fun to be out there. And again, welcoming all of those, you know, incredible athletes in, into, into Auburn was, was a good time. Any other council members have items that they'd like to speak to? I see Rachel's hand went up first.
Muted, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make two quick, to not, acknowledge two quick things. First off, this month is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so I wanted to, I know with COVID, it's been a little challenging for many people right now. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that and, and, and show our support for those who are having a difficult time right now and, and acknowledge that it's something that people deal with from time to time, and we should make sure that we support each other and that we help others get support when they need it. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And I wanted to say a big thank you to all of our teachers at the Auburn schools and the other staff that are at the schools, because they do an amazing job. It has not been easy for them this past school year, and so I want to make sure we're acknowledging what a great job that they've done, given the difficult circumstances that they've been in. So thank you to all those teachers and administrative staff.
Great, thank you very much. Any other council members? Alice, I see your hand up. Sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to announce, if you haven't heard already, but the governor did amend his proclamation for an emergency with regards to drought, and so now Placer County is included as one of the counties where drought is, is occurring. Uh, there's no requirement for specific conservation efforts at this time, but I'm sure something will be coming down the pipeline. But just so we're aware and our residents are aware that, uh, we've now been incorporated in that emergency proclamation for, for drought. Um, and I'm sure we'll have an agenda item on this later, if necessary, to discuss the city's water consumption. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Amara.
Thank you. Um, so I could announce this at the end of the meeting during my, um, during our committee reports, but I'm not so sure everyone will be awake. Um, it's just an announcement that Placer County Transportation Planning Agency is going to have an online community workshop this Thursday, the 13th, 4:30 to 6:30. And I will be present with, um, um, our supervisor Cindy Gesterson and Mike Lukin is going to be, um, the chair of it, but, um, it's an opportunity for everyone to please come and voice your opinions and thoughts about our transportation and direction. Um, we've been working on, um, Placer County's been working on, you know, uh, sidewalk gap closure projects, the 49 rehab and many, many other projects that affect us. So, um, I'm just encourage whoever, um, is listening, um, to please join in. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Amy, I'll go ahead and jump back over to you. Do we have any members of the public that have items that they'd like to speak on our consent? Or excuse me, our public comment?
I just checked live at the public comment email address and we did not receive any. I wanted to double check really quick with, uh, Bridgette if she's just here for the item or if she had public comment.
I was confused about when it's my turn.
Okay, perfect. Not a problem. Soon.
Alrighty, we will jump into our first public hearing item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, we've, we've obviously had closed session at five. It is now seven. And before we move into that item, could we have just a five minute break, please?
Yes, I was sort of thinking the same thing, but I was going to try to get through one, but yes, we'll go ahead and take a quick five minute break. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
No problem. Alrighty, we'll wait until 7:07. So Bridgette, we're one item away from the committee presentations.
That was my fault. This, this attendee list is tricky. As soon as you move somebody, everybody shifts up and you move the wrong people.
Okay.
I won't miss this part of Zoom.
Alright, it's 7:07. Let's go ahead and resume our meeting here. And, um, first up was the public hearing to levy annual assessment fees for business improvement districts. Um, taking this one.
I'd be happy to take care of that, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Amy.
I've moved, um, the attendees over that I believe are here representing Old Town and Downtown. If not, you can just leave your camera off. Um, the item tonight is the public hearing, um, for the business improvement district fees. And it is to hear any comments from anyone affected by these assessment fees in the Old Town or Downtown Business District. On April 12th, uh, you heard the reports from both districts and adopted a resolution of intent to collect and levy these annual assessments within both districts. A copy of that resolution was published in the Auburn Journal on April 21st to notify residents and business owners of this public hearing to be held tonight. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Uh, like I said, we have representatives from both downtown and Old Town. And, uh, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Do any council members have questions for Ms. Lynn? Alrighty, why don't we go ahead and have our reports? We'll start maybe with Downtown Business District.
I'm sorry, Mayor Spockley. They provided, uh, brief presentations at the April 12th meeting and are here to answer any questions if you have additional questions at this point.
Oh, okay. That's right. We, we did hear their reports last time. Um, I guess I'll open it back up to the councils. Do we have any questions for April or Christine? For those respective districts? See a lot of head shaking. No. Alright.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we're ready, I'll, I'll move by resolution to approve the 2021, 22 levying of assessments in connection with the Old Town Business Association Improvement District and the Downtown Auburn Business Improvement District.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. Um, before we take a vote, Amy, do we have anybody from the public who wanted to speak on these items?
I did not receive any public comment.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any liberation? Hearing done. Amy, would you please call roll?
Your council member, uh, Berlant.
Hi.
Amara.
Yes.
Downton Calvio.
I.
Redell Harris.
I.
And Mayor Spockley.
Yes. Thank you all for, uh, for joining us. Sorry this meeting was running a little bit long, but, um, good to see you all. Good luck with, with everything. Um, we're moving on to our next item, which is budget requests from city commissions and committees.
I can present this one. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, the city manager might want to say a few things too, but, um, this item tonight is just part of the annual budget process. The council has the opportunity to hear the work plan and budget requests of each of the city's committees and commissions and provide direction to staff for inclusion in the budget. A final decision does not need to be made tonight. It can be made, uh, during later budget hearings once, once all the budgetary information's been provided. That is the council's discretion. Tonight, each committee and commission will provide a no more than five minute presentation to the council outlining their goals for the upcoming year and will be available for questions and discussion. All of their work plans were included in the staff report and council has seen those. I can go ahead and kick off these presentations by calling on each committee, uh, member unless you have any questions before I start that.
Don't see any hands up, so let's go ahead and jump right in. Thank you.
Okay. Well, because I already have April here in the meeting, I think I'll start with the Arts Commission.
Uh, good evening. Um, I, I noticed that we, we provided a very long report on our goals and, um, proposals. And, um, I could summarize or I could read it all to you, but I will, uh, perhaps it'd be best if, uh, just took questions if you have some, or I can provide highlights, whatever you need. I know you've got a long night.
Do we have any questions for April representing the Arts Commission? Councilman Berlant?
Yeah, this might actually be better, um, answered by the city manager, but I was hoping to get some clarification on the, uh, Carnegie Library proposal. Uh, and I'm trying to even remember, um, this, I, that, that discussion has occurred, had come to council and, and April, maybe you even remember, or, or Mr. Mayor, um, that last year or the previous year's discussion. It appears that most of the project is ADA, uh, and, and infrastructure improvements. And I'm just curious why, and the staff report's kind of vaguest on this, but why that would be on the backs of the Arts Commission's allocation versus uh, an overall city improvement on, on infrastructure that, that, that the city owns.
But I, I know, I don't want to interrupt Mr. John Levy, but I mean, we did not intend it to be like in our budget. We just, since it was a budget matter and, um, the capital projects, um, workshop portion came before the commission's, um, portion. Uh, I did submit a separate recommendation, but it's just a recommendation from the Arts Commission to the city to be put on the city's budget. We did not intend to control that process or anything like that. We, I just want to make sure it got before the council in the budget process.
Thank you for that, April. John, do you, do you want to speak to Councilman Berlant's question on that?
Yeah, you know, uh, yeah, absolutely. The, the, the library and any type of improvements there probably would have to go in as part of an overall capital program. Now, uh, one of the things, uh, just, I guess it was two weeks ago, uh, went out, walked through the library, uh, with April. Uh, there, there's kind of a balance here because the, the, the way that it would really work is a combination of the implementation of an overall business plan, uh, that I know, uh, is being worked on between the idea of, of uh, the capital projects that we need to go in, which are pretty extensive accessibility, uh, as well as windows and uh, HVAC and electrical. A lot of the things I thought April did a very good job of kind of outlining at least generally what the areas would be, but um, ultimately it would be probably a pretty significant capital project for the city, uh, in conjunction. Uh, uh, some of the requests have to do with some funding for the first, uh, uh, couple of years for the operation uh, by the Arts Commission as well as, uh, merging everything into an overall business plan. So, uh, but bottom line on, on the improvement, it, it probably would fall under because it is city owned that the city would have to figure out how to, um, wrap it in because I, I, I think because it is our building, it would fall under all the requirements, uh, for a municipal building.
Thank you for that, John. And, and, um, you know, it's hard to put you on the spot, um, being, uh, you know, just in your, your first full year here. But I was under the impression that we as a council have already talked about the ADA improvements that were needed at Carnegie. Um, it's not the first time the arts community, whether it be the Arts Commission has, has, uh, you know, put forward this, this thought process of using it. But Mr. Mayor, maybe you remember, not to put you on the spot, but I thought we had already seen a plan to make capital improvements and the ADA accessibility on Carnegie Library. And I thought we had already initiated some of those, including things like the roof and some other bigger, bigger capital items. And so I was a little surprised to see this back again and kind of keyed into the Arts Commission, um, budget.
I, I do recall, Daniel, the, the conversations particularly about the roof and certainly the ADA improvements came up. My recollection is that due to the significance of the cost of the ADA improvements, there was talk about a more formal plan, uh, for, for, you know, ongoing uses and programming and what could be done there was, was, um, requested at that time. And I think that's what this plan kind of outlines is, you know, some of the startup costs outside of those capital improvements for the, for the ADA upgrades, but also, you know, some thought on expenses, annual expenses and annual incomes that might be, um, available based on, you know, making those improvements. So, yeah, we've certainly talked about some of this stuff before. Um, I, I think, given our slip into the COVID, you know, 19 pandemic that we probably lost a little bit of sight of some of this stuff.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. And, and even just looking, you know, in the staff report, I know it details out the storm damage that was done in, in one of the past fiscal years. But again, I, I guess my, my only point to the question was, did, did the rest of the improvement slip into the COVID and the, and, and the pandemic? And, and so it sounds like, yeah. So that's the answer to my question. Um, I, I'll, I'll reserve the rest for, for comments on the library. So thank you, um, John. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, um, your clarification, April. Thank you as well.
What comments?
So, so, yeah, real quickly, April, before we leave the Carnegie conversation, do any other council members have questions or comments on that? I see April's hand, uh, excuse me, Alice's hand up. Alice?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, you know, this is along the lines of what Councilman Berlant was saying, um, you know, why is this under the Arts Commission per se? I understand what April is saying is that it doesn't necessarily have to be. I really see this as a separate item. You know, that it is a capital, uh, improvement project. It's really much bigger than just what the Arts Commission is wanting to do under their budget. And so I would encourage the council to see it as a separate item and to approve the Arts Commission. Not tonight, we're not approving anything, but to really speak to the Arts Commission budget as proposed, the, the, um, the $35,000, uh, 36, actually $36,350, um, and, and target our issues or any concerns that we have on that and really set aside the, the funding of the Carnegie library, even if we don't talk about it today. But it, to me, it just fits under a separate item. It's, it's not really something that belongs under Arts Commission. Um, I appreciate April brought it to our attention. It is important. I remember when I served on the Arts Commission, it was an issue we talked about then too. But really I do see it as a separate matter. So that's, I just want to offer that.
Great. Councilwoman Redell Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, uh, in the same vein, uh, I know that I'd like to bring it back. Um, if John could make sure that it ends up somewhere where it ends up as part of the discussion for the budget. I don't want it to get lost because it is kind of a smaller thing that it could, doesn't really fit in a lot of other categories. So I want to make sure it doesn't get lost in kind of the shuffle of all the other budget items. Um, the big thing I think for the Arts Commission, having talked with April and others is really getting a yes or no on this. There's, they've, they've really worked hard to get together a plan to figure out what they want to do, how they would, could possibly make money off of this. And I think they just want, are we moving forward with this or are we not moving forward with this? So that way they're not kind of left in limbo and trying to figure out what to do. April, am I portraying that correctly?
Well, I'm in a way, yes. I mean, this started back in, in 2017 and 18. Well, I'm in a way, yes. I mean, this started back in, in twenty seventeen and eighteen when Plaza Arts vacated. So, but, but totally this, this, uh, is our recommendation to have it be in the city budget in the, I can't, I think it's two thirteen or two thirty-one, uh, for building and maintenance because, um, it, it was actually forty-five thousand. It was allocated it back in twenty seventeen for storm damage repair and it was twenty for ADA. So the bulk of it is actually to preserve the building. And I thi- and I think it's the kind of damage that could actually get worse over time, kind of like we talk about the streets. When we're, when repairs aren't made, it ends up being more expensive. So we consider it an asset and it's an asset for arts and culture, but this is totally different from our budget. It's a recommendation to the council to attend to that, to that space and the, and the proposal for the, the use of it would be separate. But to know that there is a proposal for a use, so there's an, there's a motivation to, um, to do something with it and keep it as a city asset and preserve it.
And your community is.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mara, I see your hands up.
And, and just briefly, yes, I, I agree this is a separate item, but, um, having walked through it myself, um, I, I do see the value in, um, moving forward, um, in the more short term rather than the long term because it's getting worse and worse and, um, it's something that I don't think we should neglect any longer. It's an asset that is, um, deep getting, um, devaluing rather than increasing in value. And it's just a, a beautiful asset that our city has.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, obviously I'm in agreement with, with what you've all said. Uh, this certainly is a separate item. Um, so let's jump back, April, if we might, to your proposal tonight for, for the Auburn Arts Commission.
So I don't know if you want me to go through all the, the different programs that we're proposing or just say generally that, um, we're, we're, uh, we have several different programs that we're uh, to bring visual and performing arts back into the community. Um, and actually starting, we have a, a permission from the city to start with uh, concerts and, um, cultural events in the school park preserve, starting, uh, June, um, fourth and fifth. The take note troupe, um, will be performing Midsummer Night's Dream. That's a youth, uh, theater group. They're amazing and awesome. And concerts beyond that on Sunday evenings. Um, and, uh, the umbrellas are going to be, uh, going up in the art park on Saturday. You know, big don't rise, but otherwise that's the plan and everything's ready to go. Um, we have other activities and improvements and we did, um, agree to, uh, pick up responsibility for the uh, Community Service Day in conjunction, uh, as, as, um, as you might know that, uh, the Renee Berg has left the area. And so that was kind of a gap in continuing that. And so we're actually starting that this year with our current budget to uh, work on the school park preserve. So that can be a venue for, um, arts and cultural events. We kind of have a theme for working on assets and using what we have um, to, uh, in the city to, uh, help, um, bring support and enhance the visual and performing artists, but also bring the community together because it's, you know, desperately needed. Um, let's see, the mur- the murals are now approved. They're going to get started. That is, um, again, the school park preserve area. Um, the, the Padilla sculpture, um, should be going up in the next few months. Um, and we also wanted, and I'm not sure that this is, um, something that everybody is aware of our proposal, that the council chamber stage, uh, be, um, kind of, uh, brought up to speed so it can actually be used as an asset for, um, small, uh, you know, presentations or performances because it's, it's kind of, um, ratty behind the curtain and we're proposing that it could be improved, um, at different levels of quality for a very small amount. So we, there's a range that we put in there for a thousand to twenty, twenty-five hundred, depending on the quality of like curtains that the, that the council might want. But that's, again, just another opportunity to use an asset, um, in the city to, uh, support, uh, performing arts. And then we do have, uh, another entry to keep, to keep going on the utility box projects. So an assortment of, of things. We're really excited to be able to present performances again and, uh, support artists. So we're ready to go.
Great, April. As, as always, you do an incredible job for our community. So thank you for all you and your co-, um, your commission do for, for the city of Auburn. Any questions for April on her proposed budget? And again, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a more vigorous conversation about, you know, you know, all of these numbers at, at our upcoming, uh, budget meetings and workshops. So, um, I'm sure we'll see you there as well, April. So thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate it. Amy, who do we have next?
So next I'll have, uh, Bridget Powers with the Streetscape History and Art Advisory Committee, better known as Shaq.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for letting me present. I believe you have our very small budget compared to April's in front of you. And, um, just a little less than four minutes. I'll try. Just kidding. We, we asked for twenty-five hundred dollars each year for a couple of reasons. One is as the shack started and we were doing tile placements, we realized that the historical tiles that the city council approved a long list of names many, many years ago, did not have people who would come forth to help support and pay for them. There isn't anyone left a family or an association or friends that were able to contribute. And we realized that we weren't putting up enough of those historical tiles. Our historian at the time suggested that we find a way to make that happen. When we lost the redevelopment funds, we decided to ask for twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And that twenty-five hundred dollars would go for placing a couple of historical tiles each year in addition to the other tiles that we already place. And then at the same time do a once a year unveiling of the tiles that we placed that year and have docents come and talk about the history and make it an event. And we combined that, uh, one time with the arts commission with the arts walk. And, uh, that was a great event. We, um, would like to continue to do those items. So we're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to continue in, on that path. I recently did a presentation to you a little bit more about what the shack is all about. And I did ask for any input or suggestions and I want to, um, thank, uh, council member Alice because I'm horrible at saying her last name. Um, I appreciate all your help and support that you're giving us to fine tune how we operate and what we're doing and to get a more historical line item of what we spent and who's paid for what, because a lot of the times our tiles are paid for. There are just those few each year that are not, and we'd like to continue to support our historical side of Auburn with this very small budget.
Any questions?
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just elaborate on that, um, one of the thing, one of the things that we are looking to do, and we've already spoken with city manager and with Andy about this, is establishing a separate account for Shaq, uh, for the monies that come in from the private sector side for those tiles. So they don't get lost if the tile is not installed that fiscal year. So like when the Hillman Foundation comes forward with their fifteen hundred dollar payment for, uh, tile for somebody, that money is deposited and that money stays in that account regardless of when it's spent because those are not the city monies. We may, we need to make sure that there is accountability. So you, just as we talk about the budget, you, you may see a separate little account, side account for Shaq. And it is for those monies that are coming in from outside of the city or even the endurance capital, the, of world committee too. But monies that are deposited specifically, uh, for those tiles that may not necessarily be, uh, ready to go in that fiscal year. So that's something we've been working on and, and, uh, it looks like we're going to be able to do that. I just wanted to know.
And it's safe to say that generally a tile submission is taking a good portion of eight to nine months. And then they aren't being placed until the following fiscal year. So we would like to make sure that that consideration is placed when we do have that twenty-five hundred dollars that we don't spend it in that fiscal year. But we have an earmark to be spent. And so we'd like to have that be a consideration as well. It's a, it's a detailed process that we're trying to make speedier. But it is what it is. I've been at this for, I think, eleven years now. And so, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Bridget. Appreciate it. Any other questions for the Shaq team? All right. Thank you, Bridget. Appreciate your time. Amy, who's next?
Oh, well, let's go with the Sustainability Advisory Committee and we have Mike, uh, Limberg available.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and, and City Council. Uh, thank you for the chance to talk a little bit about our, uh, request for for funding to help us advance some of our initiatives of the Sustainable Advisory Committee. And, uh, just a little bit of background, the committee's work over the last few months has been to, uh, develop a fairly solid, um, backbone on, on a climate action plan so that we have a good, a good benchmark on which to measure our, our progress by. And I won't get into the details on, on the plan itself, but what we have been able to, to do is, is, um, select, say, two or three specific projects that helped to implement, uh, the climate action plan. And we're thinking the use of the funds would be to help us advance possibly three distinct initiatives. Um, the first and foremost would be a robust and fairly extensive tree planting campaign um, in the downtown area, mainly along High Street. And, uh, we resurrected some of the old plans from the two thousand and seven, um, design work that was done by Foothill Associates um, with the Auburn Urban Development Authority. And part of that work was of course implemented and it's becoming, become a very popular place, one of the most popular places in the town. Um, but there were, there were plans to extend that work further up High Street. And that was never implemented. And so part of, I think, what we would be asking to do here would be to use these funds to pay consultants, uh, perhaps landscape architect in the area, uh, to a- adapt or adopt most of the goals of those, those plans and perhaps develop bitable documents in that regard, uh, to see what the cost would be ultimately to, to, uh, bring that to reality along High Street. And then any other downtown streets that may, we want to equally consider for the benefits of a tree planting campaign. Um, the goals of course would be shading, uh, reduce the heat aspect of, uh, walking pedestrian experience in, in downtown. Hopefully it would be incentive to attract more visitors and improve the business environment. And I think the Downtown Business Association is, is also keenly interested in, in a, in a program like this. And so we think we can join forces between ourselves and them and, and really move this thing along. Um, another possible initiative would be the implementation of solar carports. And the study would be to, to locate the best and most promising, uh, city property where either a demonstration project could be done or something that's directly beneficial to, say, city hall in terms of, um, lowering energy costs or providing emergency backup power and battery storage and things like that. Uh, a, a very identifiable, uh, cost effective scheme to, to show the benefits of renewable energy and, and distributed energy. Um, and of course, we're also keenly interested in helping Amy with the web development of our, our own particular page, which highlights all of the city of Auburn's initiatives to date, or this is the goal anyway, to highlight the city's initiatives, um, such as the electric bus program, one example. To promote that city of Auburn is, is, um, having this, these, these programs in place and, um, looking forward and other initiatives into the future. So we think between those three big ideas, uh, we could, we could certainly put the money to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Do we have any, I see Councilman Berlant's hand is up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will just, um, turn this into a question. Michael, I, I really, uh, appreciate hearing the, the ideas you guys have, um, especially, uh, the, the tree planting, uh, for many, many reasons, uh, beyond just the, the, the climate, um, component of it. I, so I, I begin the conversation with, I'm totally supportive and whatever I can do to help, including being there. I just, and maybe it's more of a programmatic question for our city manager. The difference that we see in the other committees is they've really spelled it out. And I know that it's even mentioned the discussion that you're not there yet. So I'm curious if there's a reason why uh, tonight it might not be more appropriate for us and we may not do it tonight, but here in this budget, whether or not we, we actually direct dollars into it or wait and, and give you a little more time to come back with an actual plan of saying this is for this year, our, our work plan. Here are the projects and here's our estimated costs. And again, I say that with total support behind the things you've listed. I just, it's the, the other committees do a very thorough job of really detailing it out. Sounds like you just need a little bit more time. And so is there any downside on your end? If, if there's a pledging and support from the council, if we kind of just put a pin in it until you guys can really firm up what those overall costs for the year would be?
Oh, uh, totally understood. As a matter of fact, I, I think I'd like to work a little closer with, uh, city manager, uh, John Donlevita, chart out some of the more, uh, specific technical aspects of the proposals and sort of flesh this thing out in more detail. Then perhaps the next go around, we can elaborate further with the level of detail you're looking for.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. And, and so I guess I'll just state that, um, you know, if tonight it's not, that's part of our direction for city staff to work with you to do it. It's not with any prejudice against the, the ideas, um, or the support from it. So thank you, uh, for that explanation. And um, when we get to the comments at the end, John, we can circle back up with what we can do to ensure that we've got a little bit more planned, uh, development, uh, teased out. Um, and then what we can do to figure out how we, we actually key and, and program this, uh, a, a better specific number to each item. So, Michael, thanks for, um, answering that and, and look forward to those projects taking, uh, taken light. So thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Mara?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, well, as, as part of the committee of the sustainability, um, we, you know, the projects, as, as this council knows, um, this is a, a new, uh, a, a brand new committee. And, um, so they, they've spent a lot of time actually identifying and they're at the point now where they're, they, um, they do need money to go forward. And I think, um, I think, Mike, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think you have a, a good idea and you would like, and I think it would be good to work with city manager. But, um, if you came back before, um, our June budget, uh, maybe in two weeks or the, or the sec- or the meeting after that, would that be enough time, uh, Mike, uh, for you to have a little more specificity in terms of, um, how you would use the money and, and how it would be of value toward those projects?
I do think that would be enough time, yes.
Okay, so, so, um, you know, as part of the committee, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive, obviously. I think these are just valuable, um, projects that the committee's been working on and it, and certainly a, a canopy um, as Councilman, uh, Mar- uh, Berlant indicated of trees is of great value and um, I, I think we just need to, you know, um, support this and get going on that. It takes a while, as you know, for a canopy of trees to really, um, be of value to a city. But, um, but in any case, um, what, what I hear you saying then is that, um, and I, what I think the committee would like is to budget, is to have some um, allocation for this, uh, budget, to the June budget, not, not in the, in the far future. Is that, is that right? Or I don't, you know, am I putting words in your mouth, Mike?
I think we can certainly work to that, that timeline to elaborate to the extent I think that, that would justify this, this request for sure.
Thank you. Mayor Spockley.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Riddell Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'm, as I, I used to be on the committee, I'm very excited about, um, getting some money going forward. I think that, um, what the trees are, are great and I, I am excited about those. When it comes to solar, since I've worked in that area before, I would want to make sure you have enough money to do some analysis on, on making sure that that's going to be a cost effective, uh, um, option and where it makes the most sense. So maybe not the full ten thousand, maybe like two thousand dollars to make sure that you could have the resources that you need to make sure that, that, uh, you can get the professional help to, to see if those are the right options in the right places. So I would say maybe not the full ten, but maybe a smaller portion. And then once you get those projects flushed out, then we can increase for those projects if they make sense. Around solar, though, I would want to make sure that you're thinking about batteries and electric vehicles combined. Solar by itself, I would want to have compared to Pioneer's renewable energy rate that they can give us because it's a very similar product as having solar. But if you combine that with EVs and batteries, there's an added benefit that we can't get just from any power company. So just food for thought.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Dauden-Cavil.
Yes, thank you very much. I mean, I, what I was going to say has pretty much been said with regards to the need for a more developed work plan. I appreciate the initiative that the committee has. But really, to be fair and equitable among all of our committees, it's important that we have, you know, a very transparent plan of action, exactly how the monies would be spent. You know, and then we have accountability, really, because at the end of the day, we are spending the public's money. So I would just appreciate, you know, as been stated, that you come back to us with a more defined plan. You know, maybe as Councilwoman Riddell Harris mentioned, you know, you're asking for a lesser amount with regards to solar, just on the analysis that might be needed. You know, just really, I think it's important to really flesh it out. And the other thing is to realize that we have the mid-year adjustment with the budget as well. So if you're not ready to come up with that detail of a plan for June, then there's always an opportunity during the mid-year adjustment as well. So don't feel like you just have to throw everything at the fire right now because you don't. But you do have some time. I also just briefly wanted to say, you know, with regards to the canopy, the trees and so forth, I know that's been something that's been talked about for quite a while. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I know Downtown Business Association's been calling for it as well. But I just want to be clear that the council has not directed the committee itself to actually develop a climate action plan. And I understand that what you're doing is trying to address some of those issues that are climate-caused. And so I'm okay with that, but I just want to make it clear that there's not, we're not undertaking a development of an actual plan at this time. Yeah, I say that simply because I know that you had mentioned that and that you had mentioned that these were kind of components of that, but we really haven't authorized an actual plan. But I do look forward to your coming back with more details on your work plan and how you could spend those monies. And I thank you so very much for your interest. You know, this work on all of these committees is, you know, a tremendous amount of volunteer hours. Now, you have to go back on your own time, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for making that effort to make our community better. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
This may not be something that needs to be addressed right now. But John, in the past, when he talked to the committee, talked about the importance of having that climate action plan for some of the economic development things he was planning on doing. So I want to make sure that maybe that can come back around to the city council and talk about that particular issue so that way it gets addressed. Because that's something that John has said would be helpful to the city to have for our planning purposes and economic development purposes. So I just want to make sure that that comes back around at some point.
Okay, well, maybe a point of clarification is, it's not an official City of Auburn document, as it were. It's more of a framework for our committee to use to organize our conversations prioritize what we want to put forth as a recommendation or advisory.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Yeah, Michael, thank you very much for your comments. I do want to just continue briefly. A climate action plan is a very specific thing, and it has advantages and, in some cases, disadvantages for communities that put them together. We had a lot of conversation when we developed this Sustainability Committee about climate action plans. And I think we need to be all thoughtful as we're having these conversations and as your committee is moving forward about what is the game plan, what is the City of Auburn's desires with this committee? So yeah, it could be a framework for you. It could be, you know, something that your committee pulls together to kind of help guide some of the efforts, and that makes sense, but it's not a climate action plan. In my mind, that has an entirely specific meaning and purpose. And for some communities, super valuable, super helpful. For other communities that have far less development, less advantage, less benefit. So, yes, Rachel, I agree with you. We need to bring that conversation back. If that's the direction that this committee's heading, or if that's something that John thinks is important for us to do, we need to have those conversations. Sandy, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Spockley. Yes, I would agree with Councilwoman Rachel Riddell Harris. We do need to bring that back. But, you know, we're getting off topic now. He mentioned, he mentioned that it isn't something that he has brought forward. It's not developed. It is just, at this point, a outline that they have, they're going on so that they're not scattered. We're trying to be very systematic in our approach. And one last thing, we skipped over the webpage. If anybody's interested, go look at the Truckee Sustainability Committee webpage. It's fantastic. It's interactive. It helps people. It helps our committee. It helps the community. It helps people that want to move into communities. So a webpage and support for the sustainability to to implement that would be another value. But I know that Mike and Glenn, who's also listening, will come back with some very specific, very specific work plan. And I'm sure that you will all be very impressed, and I look forward to seeing that and working with them as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Mike, thank you again for your time and presentation here tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Amy, where do you want to go next?
And next, I'm going to have Marjorie Cook with the Economic Development Commission.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor Spockley. My name is Marjorie Cook, and I am the current chairperson of the Economic Development Commission. I would like to start with some information about the commission. The goal of the Economic Development Commission, or EDC, is to enhance the City of Auburn's business environment and economic base while preserving and enhancing the social, natural, and financial resources. In other words, to enhance prosperity for everyone in our community. Responsibilities of the commission are to design and promote an economic development plan based on the needs and views of the business and residential community, to facilitate the creation of jobs in the city in both existing and new businesses, to champion assistance to new and existing businesses, to promote the city as a destination point with emphasis on lodging, food, recreation, entertainment, and arts, to encourage doing business locally, to advise the city, council, city manager, and planning and public work structure on economic development matters, to enable more attention to be given to economic issues and opportunities, and to provide a greater opportunity for citizen participate, sorry, participation in the affairs of city government. Further, the EDC has been tasked with receiving and reviewing grant funding requests. Historically, this was providing contributions for new projects and events. Some of the past events that we have helped in the last fiscal year was the Home for the Holidays, which was the fall and Christmas decorations for City Hall, Chamber of Commerce's pilot program for social media and website development. You heard an update from Jackie Weston earlier. In previous years, we helped the Gold Country Fair Heritage Foundation's golf tournament, some film documentaries like Typewriter Revolution, single-track running USA 50K National Championship, Crime Victims United Foundation's All-American Rib Cook Off, and quite a few others. For the fiscal year of 2021 and 2022, the EDC is requesting the city council increase its budget by $35,000, from $20,000 to $55,000. This increase is due to our expectation that more funding requests will be received due to the challenges of COVID-19 and from the SWOT analysis that was prepared by Auburn's former economic development director, Maura Rowe, in June of 2020. As we emerge from COVID-19 and its restrictions, people will want more activities and options for entertainment outside the home. Events benefit the business districts, hotels, restaurants, and shops, and bring life to the streets of Auburn. Events also increase the appearance of vibrancy of our town. Unfortunately, most of Auburn's events include some of Auburn's largest events, like the Western States and Tevis Cup, were canceled. Weddings have been canceled. These things bring large crowds to Auburn to fill the hotel rooms and spend money at our local restaurants and bars. Therefore, if you look at our budget request, we are asking for an increase for just grants for events to $37.5. This increases again due to the expectation that not only will we have to help the, some new events, but existing events. Where in the past, we only funded new events. Our expectation is that the existing events will need help because of shutdowns and stay-at-home orders due to COVID-19. Both profit and nonprofit businesses were hit hard. Fundraisers were canceled. Businesses were forced to shut their doors. Some events that just recently asked for help from the city was to continue to hold their events, such as the Brew Fest, the Frodeo, the All-American Rib Cook Off, and Country Christmas. I'm sure we'll be receiving more requests. We also added three categories in our budget, and this was based on Maura's SWOT analysis, business attraction and retention, infrastructure development and marketing. These categories are for the purpose of attracting economic investment in Auburn by increasing awareness of what Auburn has to offer to a greater geographical area and the further goal of increasing tourism, attracting skilled workers, and promoting community. In addition, with the internet, we are no longer just competing against nearby towns, but with the world. I didn't have a lot of detail in the budget, so I wanted to let you know of some things here. Under business attraction and retention, we'd like to join the Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council. Under infrastructure, we'd like to help sponsor bringing a shuttle to Auburn to help move people between business districts and possibly some of the recreational areas. Under marketing and branding, we would like to leverage our resources by partnering with regional member-based destination marketing organization, which is Gold Visitor, I'm sorry, Gold Country Visitors Association and SF Travel. We'd like to partner with Visit Placer on joint marketing initiatives for familiarization tours, the co-op marketing program, and possibly trade show attendance. We are currently developing a 48-hours and 24-hours in Auburn itinerary, and would like to have these printed for distribution purposes. The purpose of creating specialized familiarization tours is for brokers, like journalists, and top influencers and media outlets to highlight Auburn businesses and available properties to support our current businesses and to attract new ones. In summary, the EDC believes in Auburn being a very desirable place and wants to capture every marketing and promotional opportunity that we can by bringing life and vibrancy to our town. The EDC hopes you approve this budget. Thank you, and do you have any questions?
I will say, before we jump into questions from the rest of the council, I will just add, as a member of the EDC, that in, you know, with everything that's gone on with respect to staffing changes, obviously, the pandemic, and some of the things that we've identified and believe to be areas of focus moving forward in the SWOT analysis that was mentioned by Marjorie, that while the amount is more, we believe that the demand for these opportunities, now that we don't have an economic development director, will grow significantly. So that's kind of the basis behind the funding requests. The, you may recall, the EDC brought forward to this council, boy, four, three, four years back, a very aggressive budget in a fairly challenging time that kind of spun off to the hiring of Maura as a full-time economic development director. So it's, it's, it's not that we're being greedy or trying to, you know, take more than the rest of the committees. It's, we truly believe that the efforts and needs, now that we don't have a full-time economic development director, are going to warrant some of these these expenses. So I'll leave it at that. Open it up to the council. I see Councilman Berlant was first up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Marjorie. Thank you for your presentation. I do have a few questions, you know, and some concern that I think we can kind of work through. First off, curious, the mayor just mentioned, you know, the City of Auburn's Economic Endurance Plan. And just curious how this budget ties in to that plan. With this funding request, are you able to start meeting some of the goals that were in that plan, or how do those two tie together?
That's correct. A lot of those goals have been met. There are a few that will not require funding for us to, I mean, it's more of like what the city would, in the city's own budget. And we just kind of remind as an oversight that they need to be done still. But some of it, like the marketing, is in there. We have not, in the past, before the EP, done a great job, I believe, in marketing Auburn to the areas around Auburn. And some of this is marketing money to help do that.
Thank you for that. You know, my next question is, it looks like a number of these initiatives that you're wanting funding for are likely items that the city already funded in the past, but under either the Economic Development Department or under the city manager's discretion. Do you have any idea, and any idea of what you could kind of enlighten us on things that are not really new funding requests, but kind of just change from them being funded by economic development or the city manager to now being under EDC? I don't know if that's something you have, but I know for a fact the city manager had discretion and, you know, would fund projects that didn't run through EDC. I know that some of the marketing stuff ran under the department itself. And so just curious, how much of this is new versus how much of this is just a realignment from the departments into the committee?
Yeah, correct. I do not know all the budget items under the city manager. Some of this of joining, like the Visitors Association. I don't believe we're currently members of those things. I don't know that you guys have somebody else staff that would do that. These are things that what Maura's position would have done was handling. And I don't believe the new position you guys are considered filling will have the same you know, goals as she did, which was to market. And so we're just trying to pick that up. Some of it is, it's come to my attention that, you know, under, in the past, we would see money events the first time, and then it was up to them to sustain that in ongoing years. They were expected. This would help you get started. You should be making enough money to continue it. We've already are seeing requests, we haven't gotten applications yet, for a number of businesses over $15,000 in requests. And because so many nonprofit fundraisings were canceled without their expenses being, you know, stopped, I have a feeling that we are going to be adding new, not just doing existing things or actually new events, but having a large number of ongoing events, asking for some money to, whether that's marketing it. I mean, we don't know till we receive their applications what they'll use the money for. But I do expect to see quite a few because of what COVID has done to everybody.
Thank you for that. The tour specifically, though, the broker tours and the familiarization tours, I know that those have been done in the past. Did the funding of those come out of EDC, or did those come out of the city, you know, again, various departments or funds?
I'm not sure. I believe originally, I didn't add it to my list of things that we had funded, which I only have the last two years here. But the broker tour went really well. It had a really good response, and a lot of brokers from outside the area came in and took back information about Auburn, which they would not have known. I mean, most brokers are not going to know anything about Auburn. And it was a great opportunity for them to bring that information back to their companies and share that.
Marjorie, I guess the point I was, not, sorry to interrupt you.
That's right.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just going to say, I guess the point I was trying to get at is, it looks to me like a lot of these items that you're asking for appear to be new money, appear to be additional, and it's a pretty big ask. Let's put the events aside, but it looks like some of these items, from my perspective, were probably are were probably are not new to the city's budget, just again, a realignment. And so I don't know if maybe others don't share the same concern, but if there is concern, it may behoove you to help us understand what's really new money that the city is spending versus what's new money going to EDC for these same these same topics.
Your question, the only item on here that is the same item budget every year is the very first one. New events, twenty thousand dollars. Every year we get the same thing, at least as long as I've been on the commission, which has been a number of years. Everything else there is new for the EDC on our budget.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thanks. I'll circle back to that when we have discussions. What's the philosophy change that the that the committee has related to? Well, actually, let me take a step back. So you have you have new events, twenty thousand dollars and then ongoing fifteen. The ongoing is kind of a shift in 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 the, you know, the philosophy that you mentioned, you gave the reasons why. Do you guys have a list of the 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 events you think and the dollar amount you think you might fund out of that fifteen thousand dollars?
I believe I have written it down.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot tonight, Marjorie. I think it might just help all of us to really understand what do we get out of fifteen thousand dollars? What do we get?
The new events of twenty hasn't changed. That's what we have received in the last number of years. So the ongoing again events for fifteen, we already had requests for those for the Brew Fest, the rodeo, the All American Rib Cookoff and Country. Now those came in to the city manager. The next step would be to do an application process for the grant funding. And once, you know, the EDC does not actually give this money away. We send that recommendation back to the city council who has final approval on spending the funds. But just seeing that those have already come in and that's from one person. It makes me wonder how many more requests we'll get for helping this. And it's just a way to keep it off the city. I shouldn't say it that way, that we are taking the time to review those requests instead of city council doing it one by one. And then as they come in and get approved, we send them back to you guys for final approval.
Okay, I think that ends my questions. I have some comments, but thank you, Marjorie, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Mar.
Thank you, Mayor Spockley. So, Marjorie, yeah. I'm I'm confused. I, you know, I have one sheet of paper in front of me and and you said you get twenty thousand dollars for that's ongoing. What is that for? You call it new events and you said that occurs.
As an example, I just wrote down the ones that we we don't give twenty thousand every year. The budget we get is twenty thousand. We get funding applications from various organizations for for events that they would like to put on and they're asking for money for help. In the application, they'll say what they but their budget is, their own budget is, and what they think our funds will help them with. So for an example, in the last couple of years, here's some of the things that we helped give seed money for. So when was the fall on Christmas decorations for City Hall just this last year? Some very small amount was given to the chamber for the social media and website development that they are giving out now, the one that Jackie gave an update on. That Gold Country Fair Heritage Foundation had asked for some and was granted for a golf tournament. The Typewriter Revolution film documentary a couple of years ago, that was also seed money from us. The Heritage Fountain's ice skating rink that they did at the grounds. A USA fifty K national championship to be held here from the request came from single track running. String Fling Guitar Plus Festival, Friends of Auburn Recreation District asked for that. Crime Victims United Foundation, we helped them with their American First American Rib Cookoff. The state is international groups who run the, I believe they run the Western States one hundred. They asked for help to do a welcome dinner for their runners and family one year. Sunday Public Market and Supper Event, I believe Martin Maddox got that off the ground the year before COVID. We did not do it last year, but they did it the year before. A film Hemingway one twenty birthday, hundred and twenty birthday. And we also did a business appreciation luncheon at the Flyers Hangar for all the, I think it was the top one hundred businesses located in Auburn. I believe that was in two thousand nineteen. And then the VIP Broker Tour, we did have to give the money for that last year and and Laura planned that and carried it out. So those are the some things that we have spent, you know, proved and spent money on in the last couple of years. I did not make a list of anything before two thousand nineteen. But it's ongoing for years.
I guess, so it sounds like a lot of these, though, will not occur again. And I'm I don't I don't want to go. I guess I guess it would be helpful for me to have a list and to know which ones either will occur or or are ongoing yearly and the amount and maybe even more specificity of how they spend it.
The applications have always been sent to the city council and all that information's on there. In the past, we never did on, we never had ongoing expenses for these events. It was a one time here somebody event. It was not ongoing.
Yes, specifically, it was intended not to be an ongoing funding stream. It was a one time, get an event up and running and let them go from there. So
That's that's my question then. Why? So I don't understand how the twenty thousand, why the request for twenty?
Twenty is the request for every year. That's just what we know our budget is. As requests come in, we know you know, we need to spread that out between all applicants.
Okay. And then you think though, there's going to be above.
And they may ask for five and we may grant three, you know, they depending on what day, how they present it to us. What we're asking for is more money in that community grant, you know, area, because we do expect this year for some of these events to come back and ask for some help because of the post COVID need that they may need more money. And I I only know that because it was brought to my attention that we are already, the city has already through John has already received some requests for those events that have already happened in the past. We have not done additional monies in the past for a second or ongoing year. But we are now seeing seeing requests for it. It's just a budget it. They still have to apply. They still have to show us a budget. We still ask them questions when they come in and we still send a recommendation to you to actually spend those monies. We don't have the power to call Amy as they write a check. It still goes back to city council for that final approval, whether it's a new event or an ongoing event that needs help.
So this is like a placeholder for for events. And so my other question is for John. Are some of the items that was submitted here for the Economic Development Commission? Will some of those be taken care of by our new hire? We're going to be hiring someone. Especially in the marketing aspect.
So will will the position work with the EDC on some things? Yes. Will they necessarily be a marketing person and putting on events? Probably not. The idea of the promotion of the city. The the job is going to focus on bringing in jobs and recruiting companies to come in, which represents our real core. So but will they be working with the EDC? Yes, because part of what they will be doing is working on business development. Some of the smaller things, CDBG types of things. So but, you know, will they necessarily be putting on an event? No, that's not really that that position's going to be geared.
Okay. And so I guess just just a follow up question. So for instance, like the broker tours and some of those things, that some of the tours is more what I would expect a new, our new position individual would would take over.
Precisely. I I will tell you that the Auburn Airport Industrial Area has some of the largest brokers and and commercial leasing people in the Sacramento region out there. So but conversely, the idea of having business inventory, having property inventory and doing some of those things exactly, that that's a really important function to let people know what's out there as far as is as far as getting really good businesses here.
Thank you. Thank you, Marjorie.
All right. I see Councilwoman Damm cover you next.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Marjorie, for your 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 presentation. I'm going to essentially say something similar to what I said about the Sustainability Committee, and that is that, well, I appreciate that we have this budget here. I I would really like to see a more detailed work plan. You know, again, accountability, fairness and equity among all the committees and the commissions. And there clearly was some confusion as to new events and ongoing events and some of those things and what's new and what's not. And to me, it'd be really helpful because we are just in this initial stage of our budget process and there's time to do this is to actually have more of a detailed work plan and and to actually show us, okay, for new event funding, you know, last year you requested twenty year, last year your adopted budget was twenty thousand, this year it's twenty thousand. So that you we were clear on exactly what you were received funding for last year and what you didn't receive funding for because you are asking for quite a bit more, you know, the thirty seven thousand dollars more. And so I think it just needs to be very clear on, you know, if you show that, we know exactly what is new, what is new that you we have not funded in the past. The other thing is, is just, I think that there's potentially some confusion as to what the committee does and what the the staff person will do and whether or not this is budget money that should come out of the committee or if it's budget money that should be come out of the economic development. You know, department budget, so to speak. And maybe, you know, John, and and you can work a little more closely on that. Is this really truly a function? Is this an appropriate function of the committee versus, you know, the staff person or what have you, just to ensure that we everybody's clear, including the person that we hire into this position, they know is this something they have to run by the commissioners? Is this something they can do on their own? So I just I just would really like to see just a little more detail, a work plan, you know, all we really have is just a proposed budget. But I'd like to just have, you know, doesn't have to be as elaborate as the Arts Commission. They kind of have the gold standard when it comes to these things. But, you know, just so that we can know even what you've done this year and then what you're proposing to do next year and showing the difference in the budgetary allocations that you're requesting. I think that that would be very helpful at this point in time. So that's my suggestion to you and to bring that back. And I think it'll be clear for all of us, just based on the comments I've heard from my colleagues so far. So, and thank you very much. I know, again, all of our committees are voluntary. We all spend our own time. I'm I'm doing the same thing, spending a lot of hours helping the committees that I sit on that are city committees I sit on too. So I really appreciate the time is is valuable. But I just think for accountability purposes and it's so that everyone is clear, a more detailed work plan and really showing, you know, what what amounts you approved last year and what you're asking for this year, so we can truly see the differences there too and what is new. So thanks, Marjorie. That's that's all I have to say at this point.
So so next up, we have a moral, but real quickly, I just want to paint a little, you know, I I ran through all of the previous budgets and and how much we allocated to economic development. And and I think this helps understand why this committee is asking for a little more this time. In in sixteen seventeen and years previous to to that, we had zero dollars allocated for economic development. In as far as a department goes, as far as a department goes within City Hall. In seventeen eighteen, that's when we, that's when the Economic Endurance Plan suggested that we hire a a full time employee. And and that's when the hundred and sixty four thousand dollar budget came into being. Eighteen nineteen, hundred ninety six thousand dollars, nineteen twenty, two hundred and three thousand dollars, twenty twenty one, sixty three thousand dollars. So, again, I I I'm not being defensive. I'm just trying to let you all understand there's there's a lot of stuff that the group needs to, you know, that the group wants to work on. Yes, we need to provide more detail and we can work on that for sure. But just because we don't have an economic development person and tonight we passed a, you know, approved of product, yes, job description and pay scale for that person to pick up some of these responsibilities, but we have a need to continue our economic development front and and some of that I think is is kind of indicative of what we've spent as far as an economic development department in the years past and where we're at today. So with that, I'll move move on to Councilwoman tomorrow, I think is next. And then we have Councilwoman Riddell Harris after that.
Well, let me answer to Alice just real quick, too. A lot of what we have as new was came from a presentation that Mara had put together and the dollars she had put in for those things. I did summarize it in a word document, makes it really easy to read instead of going through her whole presentation. I'll send both of those to you. And then, like I do have just in my own Excel files, I can say just the last three years, one is COVID year, so there's going to be very little. In two thousand nineteen, we spent all but five hundred dollars of the budget. And we can't really tell you what will be this year because we won't know till the applications come in. You know, we don't, we will not be choosing those events. They they need to come to us and we need to get the word out that we may have seed money. But we really won't know until we receive applications and what they ask for, what that will look like.
And I I I totally appreciate that and I understand that as well. I mean, and I did have the opportunity and to sit on Economic Development Commission for many years, you know, during my previous tenure. So I remember the whole process and I'm very supportive of that and I'm supportive of our events. Believe me, we do the same thing with Endurance Capital, right? We support events too. So I'm right there with you. It's just really providing a little more detailed plan, having everything in one place and, you know, just resubmitting that to the council so that when we start to build the budget, we have a concise work plan that, you know, and again, just shows what you're what you're really proposing to do, you know, and with a little more detail, like you said, you had some documents, but just putting it all in one place and then showing this is what we asked for last year and this is and this is what we're asking this year. I totally get that there's going to be more demand with COVID. I I I understand all of that. But just it's just a little more detail. It's really what I'm looking for. So thank you.
Absolutely. When do you nice, we actually have the budget on our agenda for tomorrow is our is our meeting. When do you guys want this information by? Is there a date you absolutely need this by?
Our next meeting, I believe, is May twenty fourth. So it'd be good to have it by then, you know, I think we we ask the same for Sustainability Committee. So it'd have to be before then. Amy could tell you exactly what they that means. That's the need.
Yeah, that council agenda is at least going to be going out by the Wednesday prior. That's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth. All right. I'll try to have to you by eighteen.
So who, I'm sorry, who are we with as far as questions? Alice, are you done with questions? I know Rachel has.
I am. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riddell Harris. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to play the new person and ask some process questions because this is my first budget that I'm going through. So I have a couple of those types of questions. Specifically on the budget that you submitted, I do have a question. When it says alternative transportation program shuttle sponsor, is that an Auburn alternative transportation or is that some other form of alternative?
That is the city of Auburn. There is, I believe, a shuttle that's already in the works. When your public works guy was on, he could have answered some questions for you. I'm not sure exactly, again, how that would be used, but I I know they're going to be looking for sponsors for it and ways to help pay for it the first year. I don't believe they're taking money from riders, but taking sponsorships or advertising.
So we do find it a little strange that we're sponsoring our own shuttle. So just, I mean, just as a matter of procedure to have one of our committees that's using our money to sponsor our own alternatives.
Information on that shuttle. Were you involved in that more?
Was that directed at me, Marjorie?
My phone, so I'm not, I didn't, I'm not, I have not been on the subcommittee that's been following the shuttle. It's just on call type shuttle.
Oh, I I've heard about the shuttle. I just, in general, us sponsoring our own stuff seems just a little strange. So I don't know if that's been a common practice in the past that we've provided a service and then had our committees sponsor that service that we're providing, but that just seems like we're kind of doing a circle when it comes to our funding. So I don't know. sponsor that service that we're providing, but that just seems like we're kind of doing a circle when it comes to our funding. So, I don't know.
Yeah, so it's it's actually the next item on our agenda that we'll get to to talk a little more in detail about it. But, yes, that, there there was a, there was a couple of different programs and and I I I think the easiest way I can describe it, and Minjul will correct me when he makes his presentation next, but you know, the the EDC had been looking at some programs for a while and we had budgeted or anticipated to need some budgets to 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 sponsor or help get those programs going. I don't disagree with you, Rachel. If it's a city program, we're already funding it, then that's fine. But I think we'll hear at the next item that it's not necessarily just a city program. I think there's there's other funding needs and other sources of funds that are a part of it.
And that's fine. I just don't think that necessarily we need to have it in a budget of our committee so we can give it back to ourselves. So I think that might be something that in general we try not to do. As far as event sponsorship, it seems like with all of these groups, there's a lot of events that we sponsor. Between the Arts Commission and and this commission and this group, and then it seems like other groups have events too. Are they all going through one place so we make sure that we're being equitable and we're figuring out which events we want to do? Or is it just kind of whichever group feels like doing whichever one? And John, I guess, sponsors some too. So I just want to make, is there any rhyme or reason to how we go about sponsoring events cohesively as a city? Or is it just really left up to each individual, whether it's John or the committees that make these decisions?
I can't speak on other commissions and committees because I I don't know what they do. All I know is what comes to us. So, John, can you answer that?
Yeah, I think it's more a John question.
So typically, what I've been doing, I, again, I'll play the the new guy card too. There are a couple of things that the city has traditionally sponsored over the years. So th- those are the ones that I've been handling. But as far as events, Marjorie is lucky enough that tomorrow night, the EDC is actually getting a a couple of events. I I kind of, instead of them coming straight to the council, I kicked them into the EDC. So I can tell you over over the year, I think we've spawned, that I've I've authorized three, three events that all sponsor the the name brand things, the the Symphony is an example, that the the city has traditionally done. But I've only done three, but typically the events that come through, I would kick those to the EDC for them to to consider, just a a bigger picture and a central source.
So, so Rachel, specifically, as as I think Marjorie mentioned, that that the concept was the EDC would handle the new events. And and we would do an evaluation, we've got a rubric that we kind of go through and, you know, how many people are gonna be there? You know, what's your, what's your revenues, what's your profit? I mean, they go through quite a you know, a fairly rigorous review of the financials for these, for these event coordinators. And if if the group deems them, you know, feels like they're, they're good for the community, they're gonna bring up, you know, this many people into our community to hopefully hang out and shop and 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 do things after these events, then they'll make the recommendation to the council. The the events that John just mentioned, those are the reoccurring events. Those are funding the Symphony, funding the theater. You know, those are the reoccurring things. So, yeah, there's a lot of different.
Seems like we spend a lot of our money on events. I mean, Endurance Capital, I'm sure, has some, the, I know the Arts Commission has events too. So it just seems like it's a big portion of our budget. So I was just curious.
We we do spend quite a bit of money on that. Yes, you're right.
The other question, I was, the, one of the things I brought up at the EDC committee was the fact that it would be good if we had a marketing plan. So that way we can know what we want to do, so we can move forward rather than just kind of picking onesie twosie marketing things and kind of throwing them together. So I'm still a proponent of us as a, as a council trying to move a marketing plan forward for the city, so that way we have something that everyone can base their marketing off of rather than just picking random things that we want to join or do. I think it would be good to have a a firm or a third party look at what we do and what we could do and where the holes are and all that. So I think it's a little hard for me to pick and whether these are the correct marketing things to do without knowing really what we should be doing. So I'd still would like to see that, if at all possible, come to fruition. And then also, anything related to bringing businesses into our community, I'd really like to not necessarily have in this budget. I would, we've talked, we talked earlier about the economic development budget and what we kind of decided as a group that we wanted to wait until we had the new person in place before we decided where things were going or what we wanted to make priorities because we wanted to do it with this new person. And so I think that that makes sense and may, I I would assume that John has a budget for his economic development position to use in the new budget, but I I would like, I don't want to allocate specific money to this committee for doing things that were probably gonna be under the scope of this new person because I think it might create some overlap and some challenges for that new person. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know what John's budget looks like. I do know one of my personal concerns, you know, we've done surveys in the past on what people who don't live in Auburn know or think about Auburn. And most of them have not been here and all they knew at that time was about off-lanies and Old Town and nothing else. And so, you know, one of our ongoing concerns is how do we change that when people are asked or think about Auburn? You know, all the time, not just when a marketing promotion comes out, but in everything we think, say and do. And also knowing when we do any, any event, that any person could be somebody looking to to move their business. I know personally quite a few business owners of big businesses out here at the airport who are here only because they visited Auburn. They had no plans to move their business or to move it to Auburn. But learning about Auburn or coming here and seeing how great Auburn was is what attracted them to the area. That's just something we always are keeping in our mind, that it may not be our you know, our scope of what we do, but doesn't mean we shouldn't have it in our minds with everything we do.
Oh, for sure. No, I think that's great. I just think if we, something has the particular purpose of bringing businesses here, like doing tours or something like that, that we should make sure that new person's included in that.
Absolutely. And again, John will be at our meeting. John, you'll be at our meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I will. And you know, I'll do, I'll I'll bring kind of the draft economic department budget and I'll, I'll put them side by side. We'll work on this stuff.
Great.
Great. Thank you very much, Marjorie. Appreciate that. Amy, who is next? Endurance Capital?
Last, but certainly not least, is Councilmember Dowden Calviou, representing the Endurance Capital Committee.
Excellent.
All right, let me get to the right page here. Last but not least, so, yes, we have a a work plan that we put together. You know, at the bottom, at the end of the day, we're requesting a budget of ninety five hundred dollars. This is a thousand dollars more than we were approved last year. The only new item really is the endurance water bottle filling station. As you'll recall, a couple meetings ago, the the city council actually requested that the committee take a look at a pilot project for the water bottle, water bottle filling stations. There was a young woman who spoke during public comment, a nine-year-old, I believe, that had made the suggestion. The council thought it was great, sent it over to the ECC to to incorporate. And so we've actually identified a site for that and and I don't, I can't go into a lot of detail about it yet. But that's really the only, the only increase in our funding is to, is to address that particular item. So I'd just like to open it up to questions if if council members have any questions, since you've already had the opportunity to take a look at this. I don't need to re- rehash it.
I will ask one question. I think you maybe already answered this, so if I'm repeating myself, I apologize. But are are we on that water bottle refilling station? I I know PCWA in the past has indicated that they love to partner on things like that. Are are they involved at all with with this, with this?
Yes. We, we will be working with them. And and we're, we're looking, you know, right now we have one site, but we're looking at other sites as well. And and the, we recognize the cost of installation is going to vary from site to site. So it's, you know, depending on how close potable water is. So, you know, but yes, absolutely. We'll be partnering them when when we can. Absolutely.
Rachel, go ahead.
Just because I wasn't around for this, what is the welcome to Auburn sign in front of City Hall?
So what we were looking at with that is that, you know, Auburn has, is the endurance capital of the world. And so we wanted to have a sign placed outside of City Hall that just basically said, welcome to the endurance capital of the world. So we're working on that sign to put outside of City Hall. And then ultimately, we'd like to have some more signs throughout the city that talks about, or basically mentions Auburn as the endurance capital of the world.
Oh, do, have we seen what that sign looks like?
We're working on it right now. So that, we're just, we're in that planning phase right now. So.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, look at that. Getting us caught back up. Thank you, Alice. I think we've gotten through everybody, right?
That's correct. The only other person you would hear from in the past was the city historian and that position is currently vacant. Two thousand dollars has been budgeted for that position in the past, just for reprinting of Old Town and Downtown walking brochures. So that's just a note on the city historian.
Great, thank you very much, Amy. Appreciate that item. Let's go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the Minjul. Welcome back. The Auburn Transit On-Demand and Confluence Route Pilot Program. I'm looking forward to hearing about this, Minjul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's some questions that came up during the last item that we'll address, well, I'll try to address during this item. Amy, if you don't mind, could you put up the very brief slideshow that I put together?
Thank you, Minjul.
Oh, no, no, thank you, guys. So, you know, this is gonna be a brief presentation. It's not, nothing overwhelming, just to kind of give you guys an idea of what the thoughts are. This has been the brainchild between myself and the city manager. I know he's a big, he's a big fan of this. And it's kind of been something that's been requested throughout the community over the last couple of years. Us being in the position that we're at, this is kind of directionally. So, for instance, pilot on demand transit services. With limited transit options and with the introduction of TNCs like Uber and Lyft, traditional transit transit methods have gone, have begun to show the rage, to say the least. It has also helped, it has also helped transit agencies identify some of the shortfalls that we're having. It's become very clear kind of what's going on with transit, as you see what's going on with Lyft and Uber and other TNCs like that. There are two very different transit services, methods that are gonna be, you know, outlined in this brief report here. Both are based on a need and in in the area that is currently underserved. Amy, if you can go to the next slide. There there are two very different transit servers and and they're gonna help us to identify some of the goals. So this, these are both gonna be considered pilot programs. These programs are something that we're going to try out for two years, see where it's at, and I think we're gonna have positive results. Again, we don't know, and that's why we're not gonna implement them as permanent programs. We're gonna do temporarily over the two-year period, then bring it back to council to kind of overlook. And I'll, of course, we'll bring data with it to show kind of how it's been utilized, kind of how it's been, what it's costing the city and how we wish to change it or move forward with it. In terms of limited transit, in terms of limited transit options, it has, it has influenced transit service and and it's, and it's very quantifiable in the sense that we can see that transit isn't working because ridership is going down and the cost of transit operations is going up. And if you've looked at it over the last three to four years, you can see that not just in Auburn, you can see it regionally, Placerville Transit, Rosewood Transit, kind of dealing with the same issues. So with COVID happening, the way it happened and the city being in the position that it's that it's currently in, one of the big things is that we really needed to start it. We really started focusing on what can we do to make things better and what can we do that's been proven to working in other jurisdictions. So one of the things is we look at the city of West SAC and we look at some of the areas in other parts of California, rural areas, just like Auburn, and see what they're doing. And the biggest thing that they're doing is essentially reimagining what transit is. And it it's an opportunity for Auburn to do the same thing. As mentioned in the previous item, staff's been working with the Old Town Business District, the Downtown Business District, and some other local I I I don't necessarily know what to call them, or some other local agencies to kind of work this thing through over the past couple of years. We were going to put this pilot program in for the, I guess, what we would call the Confluence Shuttle. The Confluence is a new add to that, by the way. It was good, originally supposed to run just between the Old Town, Downtown, and some of the larger businesses like the the hotels, the the Marriott that was just built, and the Holiday Inn here in Auburn. The first route being proposed is going to be the On-Demand Program. This program will look a lot like an Uber program or Lyft, whichever one you guys are familiar with. This pilot is scheduled to launch on July first, twenty twenty one, and it's scheduled to run between six AM and six PM. It's, it's Uber for all intents and purposes. I mean, they're gonna call, it's gonna be completely app-based. You put in your, your location, the transit bus is gonna go out and pick you up. And along the route, if there's other passengers going to similar locations or heading in a similar direction, the pick goes up as well at the same time. The biggest issue that we've seen over the last couple of years is, and I'm sure you guys have noticed, is that oftentimes you'll see the bus pass in front of you and it has one passenger on it, or it's just doing a loop through the city or in a circular motion and there really is any, there really isn't anyone on. And that kind of equated to the rising costs, because we're just paying for maintenance on the vehicles. We're paying, paying for fuel and it's not being utilized. So this option, we think, is gonna best serve the jurisdiction. The cost of it is going to be slightly elevated from what standard transit ride is right now. Right now, standard transit ride is a dollar fifty. But because this is now gonna be able to go from doorstep to doorstep, we're gonna increase the price slightly. It's gonna be a three dollars and fifty cents, and that'll be a round trip cost. And we think with the utilization of this new program, it's going to help to pay for itself, because as you guys are, are all very well aware, Auburn Transit is required to meet a ten percent Fairbox ratio, meaning if we spend a hundred thousand dollars to operate, we should make at least ten thousand dollars. I know that number seems low, but over the last three years, we really haven't been able to meet that benchmark. And it's, it's kind of concerning because I know that this, there's options we can take to kind of make that work. Some of the bigger things that's gonna come out of this, we're gonna start to utilize our electric vehicles, which is gonna reduce operating costs because we're not really using fuel the same way. And to charge our electric buses, we're finding that it's costing us significantly less than it was for our gas-powered vehicles. So we're really gonna get to capitalize on that. The second route that's going, that's being proposed is essentially Confluence Route. This route will run Friday, Saturday and Sunday and during any major event that the city is having, with six stops starting at nine AM and running until five PM. The stops will generally be the Marriott, the Holiday Inn, Downtown, Old Town, the fairgrounds when requested, and also, of course, the Confluence. We spoke with our partners, with the state parks, and they're super excited about this. This is something that's been needed for a while. Placerville has just reduced parking down at the Confluence to areas where there's, if there's a ten-foot area, then you can park there. And it's all gonna be painted out and marked over the next couple of weeks. But it's more than half the parking that's down at the Confluence. And with things being the way they are, we anticipate there's gonna be more folks this year down at the Confluence than ever, because people just want to get out. So we think that this service is gonna take right off. I mean, these are just the basic points and the basic outlet housing services that are gonna operate. I'll just open it up to council for questions at this point. In front of you here, you'll see some of the goals that, you know, sorry, yeah, the goals that we hope to, these are gonna be the measurable milestones, we think. When we bring this back to you in two years, here's what you will be able to tell you about this program.
Minjul, thank you very much for this presentation. I'm pretty excited about this, this pilot program, but I'll go ahead and open it up. I see hands up. I'll go to Rachel first. Oh, I see hands up. I'll go to Rachel first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just had a quick question for um. For people who are riding on this, is there gonna be an age limit of being able to ride by yourself? Because I could see this as being an excellent. Way of getting teenagers around town if they're trying to get to. Extracurriculars or home from practice or something if they don't drive yet. So I just was curious if that's gonna be an option.
Well, it's it's an interesting question, because right now we don't have an age limit to ride our bus, just because we pick up. From certain schools on behalf of parents and drop them off at places like the Boys and Girls Club. And other locations like that through the city. So we're not gonna do that, you know, if. For all intents and purposes, we serve as the caretakers as we, as we're carrying these kids through the city.
Okay, great.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Menjil, thank you very much. A lot of exciting stuff um coming to fruition after I know years of of planning. On the Auburn Transit version of Uber, uh, what what's your timelines of of starting this on-demand uh program?
So we're really, this is aggressive. And we're really hoping to be able to kick this off July one with the new fiscal year, because there's some things that we need to put in place. In order to make this work, we need to get some equipment on the buses, uh, some iPads so that they can receive the the notifications. From the passengers and we also are working with a company called Transload. That's gonna be providing the software that's gonna help us to utilize those that equipment. So July one.
So will we switch to a full on-demand or will there be any routes, the traditional routes and the circular? Uh, you know, circular, you know. Route that has very little ridership. Is there a hybrid or is it all on-demand?
There certainly, that's a, that's a fantastic question, because initially the thought was to go. Right to an on-demand, but I'm understanding the comfort level of certain people in, you know, in the jurisdiction. We're gonna do a hybrid. So what is now considered our Saturday and off-hour route? That will remain every hour on the hour through the city until we see that it's no longer needed. And until people become more comfortable utilizing the on-demand. So. Right now, we have two buses out there doing this kind of loop. It's gonna go down to one, and then the other buses are gonna be serving the on-demand purposes.
Thank you for that. Menjil, is there any plan to, when we switch this on-demand and and kind of follow the Uber model? To to, would we still be, you know, in the long term utilizing? Uh, I know we use small buses, um, you know, as well as medium-sized buses in 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 our transit program. But do you, do you see a time where we move to a smaller vehicle that can accommodate only a couple passengers versus? Uh, operating a a larger bus with the note that obviously uh the air pollution district and others. Uh, you know, we received a lot of grant dollars to to fund them, but do you see a time where we kind of phase out the larger vehicle and move to something more economical?
So that's, that's. It's, I swear you guys think, you're thinking of all, you're asking all the right questions. Let's just say that. So right now, the city is scheduled to purchase another bus and, you know, in conversations with the city manager and the uh the finance director and he. We've come up with the conclusion that we don't need that at this point. So what we're gonna be looking at is an electric four-transit vehicle that's smaller. Because right now we have certain areas within the city that the buses can't get to because of the way the roads are designed. So. With this, with these smaller vehicles, with moving to long-term, it's gonna help us to cover. Entire city and even certain parts of unincorporated Placerville County.
Awesome. Um, last question for you. Um, I'm super stoked about the Confluence route. Again, I know. You and I have had the opportunity to go down there uh and with with the folks from Park who are pushing it and others. Um, what do you think the timeline there is? I know there are some other state parks and other. Uh, bureaucratic steps that needed to go through, but do you have a target date of of when we might actually start to see? Uh, a bus from Auburn to the Confluence?
With city council's permission, uh, I am being super aggressive on this one. The idea is to start Friday. We have been talking with all of our our local partners and everyone is saying, Menjil, what are you doing? So I said, I gotta talk to you guys first, so.
Well, it's gonna be Friday potentially. What what's the cost to go from Auburn to the Confluence?
Uh, it's going to be three dollars and fifty cents is what we're thinking, but that allows you to go down and come back.
Yeah. Wow, you that's, that's less than it costs to park down there, uh, evenly.
That's the idea. That's the idea, is to incentivize people to use public transit. And with us utilizing the electric vehicles. There's just just a lot of good being done, we think, by doing that. You know, we're reducing our our GHG, you know. Greenhouse gases and we're getting more people down there with parking being reduced down there. We see an opportunity to really get people. Out to utilize it and with, though we have six designated stops. Because we're moving to an on-demand style transit. We wanna see everyone in Auburn use it. So if if we can accommodate in some way to get someone down there that wouldn't normally go down there. We're gonna do what we can to make it work. I mean, that's, we think this is the best thing for the community.
Angel, I gotta tell you, eight forty-five, I'm pretty tired, um, and pretty um zoned out. You have really energized this meeting. Uh, and your your go-to uh and and timelines that start in a few days. I appreciate all your efforts to make this happen. Don't lose the energy. I can't wait to see it go on Friday.
Absolutely. We're we're, I am, I am super excited about this and I know. John can tell you, we've, I've been working pretty closely with him and this is kind of like my baby. I love transit. I went, when I was going to school to become an engineer, I never thought I would say those words. I love transit, but I really do.
That's appreciated. Thank you, Menjil.
All right, I think Councilman Don Calviou's hand was up next.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, Menjil, thank you so much. We really appreciate all your energy. And all your efforts with this. It is very exciting. Um, I have just a couple of quick questions. Um, I just kind of wondered about response time. When we, when we talk about an on-demand service, if we're only utilizing one bus. Do we have any idea? Or will, I guess it'll just be, when they pull up on the app, it'll be the same thing, bus will be here in fifteen minutes or that kind of thing? Is that, is that what you're?
So. I, to to clarify things, so the on-demand portion of it will be utilizing two buses. See, right now we have three drivers doing two routes. But we're going to, one driver is doing the traditional route and we're gonna have two drivers doing the on-demand. So we're hoping. Fifteen minutes, like if you're waiting more than fifteen minutes, I don't think we're doing our job correctly, because Auburn is six and a half square miles. So we should be able to cover that fairly well, fairly efficiently.
Uh, I I guess I must have somehow heard one bus and one bus, so that's where I was confused.
Said one bus and one bus.
And then on the Confluence Shuttle, um, I I you talked about the six different stops, but um. You know, people obviously have to be able to park somewhere long-term, hopefully. So are. And it sounded like you said you were working with the fairgrounds to develop that as a staging area. Is that correct? Cause I really, you know, I don't, what I would hate to see people do is they park in a nice primo spot downtown in front of a shop. And then go to the Confluence, you know, um, I'd rather them park somewhere, you know. So they're not taking that valuable space away from our merchants downtown. Um. So, uh, but you 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 are working with the fairgrounds on that?
Yes, I've I've been having conversations with Donales regarding this very issue and them being one of the. Biggest supporters of what things going on within the city. We wanna support them as well. So when they have events there, we wanna be able to shuttle their folks around. So that's why we're making the fairgrounds one of our primary stops and because they have such a large parking lot. Even when where they don't have other things going on there, we could certainly have people utilize that. Of course, to get, you know, to use that as a staging area to get around.
Perfect. And then the only other question I have for you, I love these timelines. Friday's right around the corner. How are we gonna get the word out? So what are we gonna do to make sure that people know about this? And um, you know, so I mean, we we need to be really aggressive on that. So what's your marketing strategy?
So this, this is, this is the unique portion. We've been talking with people quite a bit and the anticipation was that we were gonna get this out. May first, but the reason why we didn't put any marketing information out was we. Didn't have drivers and we weren't really sure if we were gonna be able to make it. So everyone knows it's coming. But now we're gonna get some some flyers out to all the local businesses. We're gonna get it out to the chamber. We're gonna get it to the Welcome Center, so. It's a short timeline, but we're prepared for the timeline, but we think maybe a slow rollout is the best thing for us, given that it's so close. And we will certainly get this thing up to speed and get them there as.
It it might be even great to, you know, I know we have some electronic signs, but just, you know. We're trying to reach our citizenry and and that's, you know, I just wanna make sure that they they are aware of the changes and the opportunities and so forth and. I don't know, if we're able to utilize the bull, the bulletin board in Old Town, I just. You know, and I appreciate a soft opening, so to speak, because, you know, there are gonna be wrinkles, but we just need to kind of. Also plan to to gear that up to really make sure that we can utilize this to its fullest potential. And let, you know, it would be great to have some signs, even if they're temporary, is it the Confluence?
Absolutely, yes. We have some signs made. I I'll get them out to the council for your review. They're they're beautiful. They were created by a local artist. Laura Maithe, uh. You'll see them very shortly. Uh, you see the city manager smiling because that's his biggest thing. He's like, Menjil, how are you marketing this thing? He's been pretty hard on me for that, but you know, now that we know we can do it and we have the staffing to do it, we're gonna push this thing very fast.
Great. And and like I said, I I think it'd be great to have signs at the Confluence, because, you know, right at the. You know, you could have been here two hours sooner.
We anticipated this thing going pretty fast and people, and it really catching on. So we've already outfitted our uh. Our electric buses with additional bike racks, because we know we're gonna get bikers that wanna go down there and do some riding and then utilize the service to come back up, so. Though you didn't see a whole lot for it, there's a whole lot in the works and. Like you said, a soft rollout might be the best thing for us right now, but now that we're putting it out there for the world to see, we're really gonna. Power to the point home and make sure we get some additional marketing and make sure that people are fully aware of what's the direction of council's given staff.
Kay Hyde, Auburn Journal, when you're listening, let's, you know, we gotta get the word out.
Absolutely.
All right, John had his hand up next.
I just real quick, we're gonna be using social media. We know that each time we've taken out a Facebook ad, we hit about six thousand people. Uh, with it. So we're gonna be pushing the app uh through social media, through our website. Uh, people are gonna need to use technology to use this, so we're gonna use technology to advertise for it. Um, Menjil's right. We are pressing this, because one of the things we're gonna do is show the power of a small community to completely upend public transit. Yep, we can have a fixed route, but the idea that any one of us on an evening that wanna go out to dinner. And have uh the transit bus come and pick us up and take us home. We're gonna show people what this is happening and I expect that it's absolutely gonna blow up. Uh, into a very positive experience for everybody. I don't care whether you're a senior or a kid that needs a ride from school to the the Boys and Girls Club. They can use it and uh it it is super easy and, you know, right now we're below four percent. In Fairback's uh uh revenue return, four percent. That's practically nothing. So this is gonna be an opportunity uh for us to. Uh, revolutionize Auburn Transit. I give Menjil a lot of credit. I think it is gonna be a self-roul up if he's gonna do it this Friday, but that's a good thing, but um look for good things from this.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Sean. Rachel, you have your hand up next.
Thank you. Um, just really fast, um. If we're, uh, what John was saying about staying out late, staying out for dinner, I this, I think you said stops at six PM. So I guess is there, if if it, we'd like to use it that way, is there a possibility of having it stay a little bit later for us as an option?
So the six PM is for the Confluence route.
Oh, okay. So what's the Uber?
That timing is still up in the air. We just know that Ju- July first is the day we wanna push that forward. We have to make sure that with. This is a very, it's very delicate, because it changes our our driver's schedule as well. So we have to ensure that we have the staff. I wanna make sure that they're comfortable with.
So just just food for thought. It'd be nicer if it, that you could go to dinner and come home.
Absolutely, right?
And then the other thing is, when, could you let us know when the first ride is down at the Confluence so we can go? I wanna be on the inaugural ride.
I I love it. I'll make it happen.
Just like we had for Cap to Cap, I mean, the Capitol Court or train, when they did their initial ride. All the electeds got on in Auburn and rode to to Sacramento on that Capitol Court or train years ago. We can do the same thing.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that you guys are fully aware.
Andy, you had a question?
Uh, actually, I don't have a question. All my questions were answered. Thank you, Menjil. I I do want it. I think we're gonna probably move quickly on to the next. It's getting late.
Yes, it is.
I don't wanna be the only one not to voice my um support, my complete support and enthusiasm and. I'm I'm very excited and I'd like to be a part of um the inaugural ride as well. And uh, one suggestion is when the umbrella celebration occurs by um. In downtown, we can have a bus there, bring people from the umbrellas down to the Confluence and back. Um, might wanna. Might wanna coordinate with them as well, perhaps. So, um, thank you. What what an exciting program. And the, I'm sorry. And um, yeah, that is correct. The downtown, the Placer County. I don't know what's going on with my screen. Placer County is uh going to the Uber-style transit as well. So, um, anyway, I'm excited and thank you.
Menjil, Menjil, I echo all the comments from my colleagues here. Thank you. Well ju- well done. We're gonna jump on to the next item. Um, item number eleven, Bureau, oh, wait a minute. Sorry, let me back up, Angel, because we need a resolution or an emotion here.
I saw Amy smiling.
Yeah, sorry.
Mister Mayor, I'll move by resolution to authorize a transit project manager to proceed with the Auburn Transit On Demand and Confluence Route Pilot Programs as proposed tonight.
And I'll probably second it. Either way, you can have it. I'll third it.
Um, and I probably ought to make sure that we didn't have any public comment.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. How about a roll call, Amy?
Councilmember Berlin?
Uh, wholeheartedly, aye.
Amara?
Hundred percent aye.
Dauden Calviou?
You got it, aye.
Riddell Harris?
Aye.
And Mayor Spockley.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Menjil. Let's uh move on here. It is getting late. Item number eleven, Bureau of Reclamation. Auburn Area Fire Plan. Let me see who's taking this one. Or somebody who just wants to jump in.
Uh, Mayor Spockley, uh, Dave Spencer, your fire chief, happy to to bring this up.
Thank you, Dave. Sorry we're running late.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Dave Spencer, your fire chief. Uh, I'll try to move through this relatively quickly. I know that. It is getting late. Um, I will underscore that this is probably um. A pretty uh important issue for us uh to take a look at. Tonight's um. Effort is to allow you to have some discussion and strategy uh moving forward. The initial. Request tonight was to do a follow-up letter uh to various uh federal elected officials. Um, I think that's still in play and certainly where we wanna end up. But since the time that we started this process, there have been several iterations from the Bureau. I've been on no less than four meetings, including uh this morning with Councilmember Berlant. Uh, yet again, and there seems to be a continuing moving target with regard to the Bureau. So with that, I just wanna provide a be, a brief background. Um, and then uh make some recommendations and then I I'll hand it over to you as a group to discuss uh where you wanna move forward. Um, that being said, initially, um, I was tagged into a meeting from the Bureau. Uh, to look at the five-year fuel reduction plan. I was provided a summary page um that talked about. Uh, treatment areas within the Bureau's uh project lands and uh the second page was a series of maps. That identified various priorities or what appeared to be priorities. Uh, once we received the presentation, uh, it was disclosed that the Auburn Shaded Fuel Brake was not on that plan. Uh, and that would um, uh, over this five-year period, there wouldn't be any additional work done. Obviously, uh, you can imagine some um concern, uh, both for myself and other uh stakeholders. And so we had extensive conversation. Um, it's pretty clear to me that the Bureau, uh, as you know, is the water management agency. And really doesn't have the background of uh fuels uh and land management uh expertise. So we certainly made a series of recommendations uh to the um central area. Uh, Central California Area Office Leadership on uh what we think is important. Subsequent meetings to that revealed that, in fact, the Auburn Shaded Fuel Brake was uh reintroduced into the plan. Uh, to a minimum of a hundred acres treated uh during this five-year period. That being said. By way of perspective, the um one point nine million dollar grant that we received two years ago. by way of perspective, the $1.9 million grant that we received two years ago is treating 250 acres roughly of fuels that to a cost of nearly $2 million. That area is under a new prescription that really equates to 550 acres of what we describe as landscape shaded fuel break as opposed to a set 300-foot wide area to protect the city. And it takes advantage of topography, natural barriers, all those kinds of things. But it clearly expands it to about 550 acres. That, that area, I'll share with you, for us working with the contractors, as you know, RCD was the management for that grant, and we had to step in and assist them early on. And I do know that on average, in treating mechanically treating these types of projects based on the topography and access is about $5,000 per acre of fuel reduction treatment. Now, all of that being said, today, we had extensive conversation with the Central Area Office and my CalFire partner and unit chief Estes from CalFire discussing all of these other areas that are identified on the project schedule, and that's on page 95. And when you look at that, you'll see that there are a series of hopscotch of 20 acres here, 40 acres here, 30 and the question becomes, what is the, what was the line of thinking to pick these areas? And why, why are we working on those particular projects? The Auburn Shaded Fuel Break is a large-scale project that connects into the Middle Fork and the North Fork Shaded Fuel Break and runs, and we're trying to get it to run continuously. And then eventually it will expand all the way down into Folsom. So it protects many communities at large. And so that is the scope and scale of the project that we're talking about. There didn't seem to be, in my mind, any real understanding of what it was that was trying to be accomplished with these other smaller treatment areas. And so we tried to assist in explaining how important it is to have a large-scale plan that folds into all of the other efforts. I'll use a phrase that my partner used, and that is to say that it is, it is not really wise to have to repay for land that we've already paid for. In other words, we've done this $2 million grant to improve the Auburn Shaded Fuel Break and to let it go over the course of two to three years to get right back to right where we started seems to be foolish in my mind and certainly doesn't protect our community. So as you can tell, I'm a little passionate about this. I think it's really important for us to take a really forward position. Not only to spin up our federal elected officials to help us, but also our local officials as well, to include the county supervisors and other local folks. That being said, as of today's meeting, the staff from Senator McClintock's office did ask the leadership from the Central Office to explain or to share with us what the, what the cost is or what the funding source was. And we weren't able to get an answer on that. When I look at the documents on this, although it says that it is a plan, there isn't any detail as to who is committed to do the work, what it costs, and what the, what the measurables will be. I come from an organization that works on specific measurable and obtainable goals. And, and I don't see that articulated here in the documents that I provided to you. So with that, I want to share with you two, two items. One is what my recommendation is for us to try to achieve. The first is three components. We want to maintain the work that we've already completed. We want to expand the current prescription so that it is relevant and contemporary to what current fire behavior dictates, and that's that additional 500 or additional acreage to bring a total of 550 acres. And then from there, improve our efforts down into the canyon with a hopscotch or some additional fuel reduction, whether it's at the Confluence or in between the Confluence and the Shaded Fuel Break, et cetera. So those are the things that I want to make sure that we try to accomplish. There are two challenges that we face currently that you need to be aware of. The first is that we're trying to ask our federal officials to fund this project. The problem is, we don't have a number specific to ask for what funding is needed. Today, the leadership explained that the work that they've lined out is fully funded. But yet we don't know what that number is. And so it's very confusing for me because, again, it speaks to the lack of specificity within the plan. So that's the first part. Because if we're going to make an ask to our federal officials, we need to be specific about what the ask is. And then we can hold our partners accountable for the work that they're doing. The second is that it was revealed to me that they're in the process of completing another NEPA. And that's not specific to the Shaded Fuel Break, but certainly for the overarching area of the Auburn lands, which I support completely. In that, there is discussion about making sure that we include all treatment types. So it's not just mechanical thinning or hand thinning, but also things like grazing, herbicides, all of the different prescribed fire, all of the different tools that we can use to maintain the work. And when we do that, we can maintain it in a much more cost-effective and efficient manner. So that, as I understand this process for the BOR, doing some research, the NEPA is filed through their office internally. And then the way that their budget structure works is that they actually charge their internal people for that process. It's estimated somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 to be able to get that NEPA completed. That's not so unusual. But my point is this, that if the NEPA comes back and the scope of work requires funding, we need to make sure that we include that in the ask as well because that's an additional cost. And I want to make sure that we eliminate all obstacles to be able to move forward and continue this work in this critical area. So those are the two challenges. I've shared with you kind of my three primary focuses of objectives to be able to work on that Shaded Fuel Break. I know that there are more meetings that will continue. And so I don't know where we'll end in this process. My staff report recommends that you direct staff to stand up a letter. But what I will tell you at this moment in time after today's meeting is that we may want to take a pause for the moment to actually craft the letter until we have a little bit more specific information so we can include that in the process. That would be my recommendation. And with that, that concludes my comments and certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. And, and I think it's important for you as a group to, to consider strategizing how best to move forward. I think we're in a unique time with the Bureau where we have their ear. We are in an environment where everybody is trying to find funding for fuels reduction. But, and I will emphasize this, that don't forget that the Auburn lands are project lands. So all of the legislation that's happening right now for fuel reduction probably will never make its way to the Auburn's project land because that's a separate situation. It's not Forest Service lands. It's not BLM lands. It's project lands defined for the dam. And so it doesn't fit into any category, which makes it this unique environment where I, I'm concerned that we won't see any additional federal funding unless we go after this specifically. So I know that was a lot of background, a lot of history. And again, I'll pause there, happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I see a couple of hands up. So I'll start with Councilman Downton Calviel.
Yeah, Chief, sorry about that. I was muted. Thank you for that report. I do appreciate it. Yes, let's go to Alice, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. This is very frustrating. I can hear that it's very frustrating for you. It's incredibly frustrating for me. You know, this has been an issue that we've been battling for 20 years. You know, when I first got on City Council and I brought the Bureau in and I brought CalFire and Parks and said, "What's our fire plan?" And everyone said, "Well, they're doing it." And there was no plan at all. There wasn't any Shaded Fuel Break. It was just, so it's just frustrating that we're still having these difficulties with them. It'd be great to know who we should send our litigation to when our town burns down because of a fire that started on their land. So I'd like to know that. But really, you know, I appreciate that we need to have a better figure with regards to the cost. You know, you talked about this $5,000 an acre to do full fire reduction, and that's not maintenance. I don't know if you can kind of try to use that as your base number. It is important that we make an ask for a dollar amount. That really is important because just saying these are the things that we want, they need to have some kind of an idea. So I don't know if that's a viable number for you to use. It's unfortunate that they tell you that they have funded it, but they don't tell you what that funding is. You know, but you know, at the end of the day, it is imperative that the BOR be responsible for those properties. You know, we clearly do a lot of work on those properties, but that's their property. You know, we expect PG&E to take care of their properties so that there aren't fires that burn us all up. We expect our homeowners to do the same thing around their property. They expect the city to do things on our city property. And the federal government should be held to the same standard. And so it is very frustrating. I think long-term, the reality is we need to have a legislative fix that really addresses these lands. I know they're under BOR and the fight to move them under BLM is one we don't even want to get into. But there needs to be some kind of a carve-out legislatively so that we don't get lost when they talk about project monies. You know, that's, that's really the problem. And so this is something that, you know, I'll kind of try to brainstorm as well. But really, that, at the end of the day, we do need a legislative fix. We need to fix that so that we don't get lost. We don't, and further. So I'm fully ready to support whatever you want to do. You know, if there's something that I can do with my contacts, let me know. You know, but the, at the end of the day, they need to be responsible. We can work with them, but they need to come up to the plate. The Auburn Shaded Fuel Break needs to be incorporated in this five-year plan. 100 acres is not going to cut it. And so whatever you need from us, you've got my full support.
Thank you. Thank you, Alice. Yeah, Councilman Riddell Harris.
Thank you. I'm going to echo some of what Alice said. I think that there needs to be a legislative fix. I didn't know that there's an issue making, switching the land back to what it was previously, but I think that being in a category all by ourselves with a federal agency that doesn't deal with this kind of land issue is a big problem. And we need to figure out how to address that issue. Otherwise, we're just going to be having this problem over and over and over again. It's going to keep creating problems. So on, on the other note, where you were saying you were having a hard time getting answers from BLM or BOR, do you need help with getting those answers? Because we could use the legislature, like when I worked in Fine Science Office, we had people, we had people ask us to help them get answers from different federal agencies. Do we need help getting those answers? Or would that just create, sometimes that creates more problems if you kind of go around agencies versus trying to get it directly from them?
Yeah, I think to answer your question specifically, currently, I understand that staff from Congressman McClintock's office is having regular conversations and regular and the temperature in the room, if you will, is continuing to increase. So I think maybe since they've taken the lead on that, maybe let them continue that process for the moment and see where that leads us. I do anticipate seeing something from the NEPA come back within two to three, maybe as much as four weeks from now. But that will provide us a number of pieces of information, whether it's cost and types and those kinds of things. So that will be very helpful when that happens. And I think in between now and then, there are several meetings that are taking place both on Placer County side of the river as well as El Dorado and certainly other subject matter experts and other fire chiefs that are becoming involved in this process. And so I think it is getting a lot of attention right at the moment. And that's why I say when we're ready to come forward with a formal ask, I want to make sure that we include all of the critical elements of that ask.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and jump in. I don't see any other hands yet, but I'm sure others want to speak. So is there, is there any way to connect the dots between 100 acres that they decided to put into the funding request and the actual acreage, which I believe is at 550 or so acres? Do we know where they came up with a fifth of the actual area?
Yeah, the discussion goes back to page 95 of the document that I provided to you in the project schedule. I believe, based on reading between the lines, that it has to do with the existing budget that the BOR has. And so they continue to talk about, well, if we can do it cheaper, we can get more done. But if we don't, we can't do as much. And so trying to reprioritize. But I'm at a loss as to tell you why they picked these particular projects and what priority they're in. I don't know, and I don't have any information on that. I've asked that question. Both myself and my counterpart, Chief Estes, have indicated that, you know, if you're going to do treatment, put it into a project that is well underway, and that would be the Auburn Shaded Fuel Break. Because the value that you get over these small components is very little. And so I think that's an important message that we need to continue to project.
Okay, yeah, it, just to echo Alice's comments, it is very frustrating. The, the, the fact that it seems to be somewhat of a cat and mouse game with these folks. They they send little summary sheets out and, and it sounds good. It sounds like we're, we're a part of this, this grander, bigger plan and then only to realize that, oh, no, we're not a part of it. It is extremely frustrating. So to echo what was previously stated, Dave, whatever we can do as a council to help you and, and your CalFire counterpart move this thing along, let us know. Some of us have, some of you have better contacts than others of us at the federal level, but whatever we can do to help move this thing along, it's, it's very, very frustrating. And I applaud your efforts. And Daniel, you too, I know you're a part of this as well. So thank you very much for, for all your hard work on this. And now I see Daniel Sanders up next. So go ahead, go to Daniel.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit, you know, the chief laid out the challenges. And not to change the tone a bit, however, I would note for, for the group, sitting through these meetings last week and a half, their tone has changed. You know, quite a bit. And I think the question was asked about what can we do to put some political pressure? After the conversation of having Congressman McClintock here in, at Medler's, I think that helped spurred some conversation because as it was quoted in one of our follow-up meetings, they didn't realize the first meeting went as badly as we felt that it went. And I think we are starting to see some, some positive change, as the chief and I have mentioned, again, just the overall fact that initially the Shaded Fuel Break was not in the plan. One thing I would note for the entire group is while the plan has 500 acres in it, 500 acres have not been treated. It's closer to somewhere in the ballpark of 250. The prescription may allow for 500, and there's room for expanded, but the 1 to 200 for maintenance gets us for closer to what has been actually cleared. It does not get us anywhere towards the expansion of widening the fuel break as the prescription allows and as a number of people have been, been working towards. The plan also doesn't really cover some topics that we discussed, which was, and I think the chief briefly mentioned on it. The Shaded Fuel Break, you know, is, is kind of the last line of defense. And as the chief will tell you, and as the, there was discussion at the meeting, let's not joke, kid ourselves of the role that that Shaded Fuel Break plays. And the fact that that Shaded Fuel Break for a fire that's really going, especially overall in the canyon, that Shaded Fuel Break is not likely to stop it. It may slow down the severity of the fire. It may give firefighters a place to safely take a stand. But if a fire is burning like a King Fire was in the canyon area, that Shaded Fuel Break's not, not enough. However, with the Confluence, with Fight 49, and with all However, eh, with the confluence, with Fight 49 and with all the recreation that's occurring, there's a lot more work that really needs to be done in those populated areas so that we can, uh, reduce the fuels where the actual ignition source is more likely to occur, not to stop the king fire or a fire that's going to occur way out into the forest, uh, but rather those more likely and, uh, statistically, uh, higher areas. And so that's the, that's where we need to, I think, continue to have more dialogue. Now, one thing the chief and I have kind of talked about strategy and, and for, for this group is we went guns blazing in our meeting with them, uh, now twice. However, there is certain level of working through the bureaucracy to make sure that the fix we're looking for is not just a one-time fix, but it's a, it's an appropriate, uh, long-term sustainable fix. Now, that could be, as was mentioned by, uh, Councilwoman Donna Calviel, and I think there's ample conversation for us as a, as a body to weigh in, which is the ownership of that land. I noted, uh, to them and they, uh, um, agreed. They are not a land management agency. They're a water agency, right? So they just don't have the tools and the resources and the expertise and the funding to do this work. We need to be cautious and careful what we ask for because just getting the land transferred to another federal agency that isn't land managed agency doesn't necessarily bring funding to do the actual work. And so that, while that may be our goal, or that may be some folks' goal to get this land transferred, I think we just need to fully think through that, that cake before we start to bake it. And so I, I guess my, my two cents here tonight are that we direct the fire chief to continue the ongoing dialogue and discussion that's going on uh, with B O R. And based on everything he said tonight and all the comments that are made, I think that the, the chief will be able to read the political room and determine the right time and the right point to ensure that Auburn is, is clearly speaking up because the passion that I heard from Councilwoman down in Calviel right off the beginning, but everybody else, we're saying that in these meetings. It is conveyed. They're understanding it. But at the end of the day, they don't really control their purse strings. Uh, and the, the big concern about, you know, asking them as a, at the Bureau to, to fund it and do it means at their level, they've got to kind of move money around and, and that could mean, uh, another area doesn't have it. And so we really think, just need to think globally to make sure that any allocation that's upcoming really is benefiting not just us, but that our long-term relationship and, and responsibilities of the Bureau, uh, that other things don't take a backseat. I just note the Forest Service has this problem. They have to prioritize fire out of their budget because they've got to reutilize their own budget, which means they then can't do prevention. And so if we go and tell the Bureau, you're going to do this fuel mitigation work because we know it's a priority, what downstream issues does it have, literally downstream issues in our community and the communities around us for the water management? And so those are just things that I think we need to think through and ensure that whatever we're asking for doesn't have a side effect that's negative elsewhere in our community, likely because it's a water issue. It will be to the Sacramento region, uh, just downstream for us. And so I think continuing to get, make sure the plan is in place, get the, the pressure to get the environmental reviews outside of the prescription, but also expanded in the prescription, i.e., uh, goats and other, uh, types of mitigation efforts that are likely not in the, the current NEPA are part of the plan. But then again, secondary is asking for a, a specific allocation for fuel reduction work for the Bureau, not just our project, because the thing is we can go and ask for, give Auburn money, but they don't do carve-outs anymore. And so we really need to make sure if we're really trying to be strategic and really trying to get federal dollars and money put into the federal budget, that we're, we're understanding, uh, how they can, they can go about doing that. And I'll just note that the Congressman McClintock's office has been the real driving force in helping them really understand the tone that we are, um, making. However, that's just one congressman. And so ensuring that we're speaking to, uh, Congressman Lamafa's office who deals with this, speaking to our senators. We already discussed at the last meeting, but I think that's where we need to, to go, uh, into the future. So again, I'll just reiterate, we have been expressing loud and clear that it is unacceptable not to include the shaded fuel break within their plan. We have conveyed very clearly that is their responsibility, uh, to fund it and to find the funding. Uh, but we've also given the commitment to help them, uh, at the, the, at a federal level, ensure that they get the, the financial support, uh, from the, the legislature in, in the, the Congress and Senate, get the, the funding that they need to be able to do the work in our project. And then our, our role will be holding them accountable to it and, and making it happen. But, um, I just wanted to show that context that we are making progress. Uh, you know, for some who've been dealing with this for 10 years, it may feel like, uh, we're just, you know, living the nightmare again. But I do think we've seen a big shift in the change in the last week and a half. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Getting tired. Sorry about that. Next up was, uh, Councilwoman DeMar.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Um, I, I just, um, I understand that grazing isn't allowed in federal lands. Um, are, are they making any progress toward allowing the grazing? Uh, do you feel like that's going to be something that'll be able to happen in the near future?
Yeah, that's precisely what this environmental review is for, is to ensure that it includes all treatment. Um, and, and grazing is just one avenue of treatment. Uh, there are many, many others. Uh, so we want to make sure that that NEPA does come back with all of those things, um, as, uh, ability to use so that, um, whatever the case may be, we're able to be efficient and effective, uh, to reduce the fuels.
And if I could add too, the conversation has also been going that they seem excited to leverage the goat program the city is, is working on so that we're not duplicating efforts. If we're going to bring goats out, let's not just stop at the line at the boundary of the federal government. Let's do the whole area together. We can get most likely a, a, a price point that will, will be beneficial to both parties. And so they at least expressed interest in that, but it, the, you know, the devil's in the details of the environmental review.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, that makes sense to me. I mean, they've been doing a great job, um, up here at, off of, um, my due. And, um, it, it makes sense just to expand it. Um, and I, and I do want to, um, um, echo what, um, Councilman Berlamp indicated that, um, areas of population are higher risk. And I know, uh, Chief Spencer, you're probably advocating for that. I think that's something that we should really strongly advocate, um, because that's something we could have some control over. Um, I do like the idea that we are helping in that we are having electric buses going down and, uh, having cars not parked on the side of the road where there's weeds. Um, so yes, I, I think we need to keep the pressure on. And I trust that you've been doing just a wonderful job and, and keep it going. Whatever you need, um, I support too. And, and again, strategically, I think you're very, um, organized in that way. And I think that you, um, you put a, put a forth a good effort in terms of being strategic in what we need and want. So thank you for that. And I would support your, um, your going forward in, in a fashion that, that helps with that, in that regard. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Don Calviel.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, um, with regards to the B O R, um, ownership, if you will, of the property. I'm not suggesting that we propose the, the land agent change because I know that that's a whole nother fight that we just don't want to engage in. What I was suggesting is there may be another legislative fix that addresses our particular circumstance, if it's through the budget process or what have you, but a, a permanent fix to that. It, you know, if there's a carve-out in the language for B O R that cites us, you know, there are legislative fixes that we could come up with or, and, and that's really what I'm looking for, is some kind of a long-term legislative fix on that. The other thing is with regard to the budget, I don't want to, you know, take from Peter to, to pay Paul and, and, and certainly affect another agency or another city or, or jurisdiction downstream by taking those funds away. But B O R, as we all know, goes the same kind of budgetary process, just like any other jurisdiction, where they go to the, to Congress and ask for, you know, this is how much we want to spend here. I mean, the president puts together his own proposed budget. And so, you know, there are certainly, um, ways that B O R could get that additional funding to help. And again, whatever kind of legislative fix we could come up with, if we could, if we're able to achieve that, then we have that stable funding source. And again, I, I don't know how many other jurisdictions throughout the country may be in a similar circumstance to us. It'd be interesting to know. I just don't know. Maybe the congressman can help us determine that as well. But I just wanted to clarify on that one transfer issue. I'm, I'm, I'm really looking at some kind of a long-term fix that doesn't necessarily mean transferring from one to the other because I know that that would be a whole nother bag of snakes, so to speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Daniel, you're.
Yeah, I was just going to add on that point, the struggle, at least in these meetings with, with Dave and John and I, is, as you know, as part of the administration, they can't tell us, you know, what they're doing in the, in their internal budget processes to try to ask for more. And until the administration gives them the green light that they're going to do that, that's the weird spot we're in is they very well, hopefully, are doing that internally. But without having administration, uh, direction or approval, they walk a very fine line like any bureaucracy would. Our city staff do it here in front of us all the time in meetings where they've got to walk the line of until it's approved by the city manager, they can't commit to it. And so that's the challenge is writing, reading between the lines, which I think we've been getting better at. Reading between the lines of what they're able to do and what they're not able to do and making sure that we're not stepping on something if they're able to do it without them telling us. That's the hard part in all of this is that they can't just say, well, we asked our boss and they told us no. We don't know what their boss said. We don't know if they asked their boss. So I just raised that, that that's kind of the delicate part of the relationship building that, that is going on and, and really back to some of the, the challenges that it's not as easy as I think we all, including myself, would like to just say carve out a million dollars out of your own budget. Make it a priority because that's where I was. But, you know, in our own discussions, they, they brought up some very good, important things for us to think about when, when that is forced on them and what happens.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, Chief, thank you again for your efforts on this matter. Obviously, it's hugely important for, for our community and, um, top of the list for all of us on the council. Um, I'll go ahead and, um, ask Amy if we have any public comment on this issue.
We do not.
Okay, we do not. Um, I believe we have an action to take on this item.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would go ahead and move by motion that we direct staff, um, under the appropriate time and based on the feedback that we've now talked about in the last two meetings, uh, to weigh in, uh, with a letter, uh, encouraging the things we've already discussed, um, but based on the political climate at the time that chief writes. And I would delegate that to, to the chief to do and bring back a copy to us and then allow us to, you know, continue to get the word out um, and share it with every and any contacts that we have.
I would second that. Thank you very much. Motion and second, Amy, would you please call it all?
Just under, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, under discussion, that letter, should it be signed by the mayor? Would that give it a little more teeth?
Well, that's what the last one was, the fire chief and the mayor.
Okay, good. Okay, then, then, then that's fine. Fire chief and the mayor is good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Berlin?
Hi.
DeMar?
Hi.
Ellen Calviel?
Hi.
Riddell Harris?
Hi.
And Mayor Spockley?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, our last, um, business item on our agenda is the council discussion regarding in-person meetings. Amy, this one's yours. Would you, uh, be so kind to give us a brief?
Uh, you know, I, I do have a brief background. It's, it's basically a smaller version of my staff report, but I'm, I can get through it in about, um, a minute and a half if you'd like me to.
That'd be fantastic, Amy.
Okay, so just a little, uh, bit in the way of the background on this item. As you know, in May or March of 2020, on the onset of COVID-19, the council, um, and the city made the difficult decision, to close its in-person meetings to the public. The mayor and city council continued to meet using teleconferencing software and the meetings were streamed live to YouTube and archived on the city's website. The public continued to have the ability to participate by providing me pre-recorded or written comments prior to each meeting. And given that, given that the governor has now announced on June 15th, he intends to begin the process of fully reopening the state's economy, it is important to prepare a plan for returning to in-person meetings. It's important to note, even after this time, risk reduction measures will likely continue to be required for in-person meetings. It's also important to note that I'm undertaking a project to improve audio/video, uh, connections in the city council chambers to allow for teleconferencing for the public to allow for more accessible city council meetings going forward. This is expected to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And some information that was not in my staff report that, uh, I spoke with Mayor Spockley about right before the beginning of the meeting was what are our, um, neighboring jurisdictions doing with their meetings? So I actually reached out to Colfax, Lincoln, Rockland and Roseville during this meeting. Um, so really briefly, Colfax went back to in-person meetings at their last meeting, so their last meeting of April. And they had four council members attend. One still attended, um, via Zoom. So they're doing the hybrid model. Lincoln is not back in in-person meetings. Uh, they have some AV issues as well in their council chambers and a hybrid meeting is not possible at this time. And they also have a smaller council chamber area where they cannot socially distance, uh, the public as much. Rockland never went to, um, online only. They immediately moved to the event center in Rockland and have been holding their meetings there. They do offer Zoom, uh, for the public to join, but the public can also attend their meetings. Uh, Roseville was only virtual for three meetings and then, uh, they allowed limited public to attend and had a call-in feature for the public to do public comment, but they are also back in person. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Amy. So, um, yeah, obviously we talked about this at a previous meeting. You had already, I think, started your efforts to try to, try to figure out the, the hybrid approach. We're, we're presuming that there'll be some sort of permanent, because I'm envisioning that, that the hybrid approach that if, if a council person wasn't feeling well, that they could call in and attend a meeting via Zoom. And if, if that's different than what you're thinking, let me know. But to do that, we've got different rules that are available to us now based on the state of emergency that we're operating under. Uh, with, you know, through the governor's office, but are, are we expecting the rules to kind of be modified so that these virtual meetings can continue to occur, occur?
Uh, well, I, I can defer part of this to the city attorney, but, uh, what I would say is that even before COVID, if somebody needed to teleconference into the meeting, it just required certain noticing. Um, the intent to have Zoom continue for our meetings would be helpful if a council member was out, but is also mainly in encouraging the public to attend, um, via Zoom so that they don't have to attend in person and are actually able to actively participate in the meeting. Because we have always livestreamed the meeting, so you could always watch it live, but this enables you to actually participate.
I guess, yes. Uh, so my understanding and talking with some of our, 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 um, uh, uh, you know, fellow council members and, and, and supervisors around the region that they're doing, you know, they've, they've all got a kind of a little spin, a little bit of a different uh, approach that they're taking. Some will do, um, telephone call-ins during, during airing items, uh, for, for citizens. Some will do, you know, recorded messages and written messages. Um, is there going to be any sort of a guideline or rulebook or, or suggested practices that we can expect to see? Or are we just going to kind of take what we think is the best for our community and kind of put that together? Is that kind of the model you're working under? Kind of pulling together what you think would be the best and going with that?
I would say that's sort of been our practice through COVID. Since it's all new territory, we, uh, came up with what we could and, and saw how it worked and then, and then changed what wasn't working and, and sort of learned from, I, I learned from a lot of fellow cities and city clerks, uh, in that regard. And that's a huge topic of conversation right now in the city clerk world. So there are some best practices going on out there. I think ultimately our goal is just to make the meeting, um, as accessible as possible, as it always has been. But, you know, um, technology has taken a 10-year leap in the last year. So I think, um, we have that to our benefit going forward.
Yeah, yeah, I completely agree. And thank you for your efforts moving this forward. I, I, I will just mention to you and I, John and I have had this conversation that if, if we've got infrastructure needs that are going to require some more time and, and money spent to get our city hall up, up, up to the point where we can fully implement a, a, you know, hybrid model for our meetings moving forward, I, I don't want that to hamper our ability to come back into the council chambers and start live meetings like we used to do. So, um, I know I told that to John. Um, I, I, I do think it's important for us to get back, well, my, my observation. I, I do think it's important for us to get back, well, my, my observation is that, that throughout this process, our public interaction has dropped off significantly. And it, it seems counterintuitive to think that making it more available and streaming and, and all of the Zooms and, and, you know, live streaming and all of that have seemingly reduced our public input in all of the meetings that we've had across the board, in my opinion. So that's why I'm saying that. I think that, you know, while the hybrid is fantastic, and I do think it would be a good opportunity to get, you know, more of our citizens, you know, into the conversation and aware of what we're doing in city hall. I don't want to hold that process up based on us implementing, you know, whatever infrastructure improvements, whatever, you know, changes we need to make to, to implement the hybrid model. I, I want to get back in to the council chambers. I want to start having in-person meetings safely and I want to do that as soon as we can. So, so those are my comments, but thank you, Amy, for all your efforts. You, you're doing a wonderful job keeping us, you know, current and up to speed with all of the, all of the, you know, requirements that are brand new and coming at you fast and furiously. So very much appreciate your, all your efforts. I see Councilman Berlant's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to tag on to your, your comments there and ask a question. Amy, what are your thoughts as far as what infrastructure, what technology and what timelines would be needed in order to do hybrid meetings?
So I've had multiple conversations with our IT consultant group and we're on the same page of what direction we need to go. We know what the end result looks like. I've also had quotes from AV specialists on how we can make things happen. There's really a scale of, of how that can look in the future. And, and that's ultimately going to have to be a decision of, of what level we have of that. But I feel really confident saying that we can get this up and running. There may be bugs, it may not be perfect the first couple of meetings, but I, I think we can really get this going in, in a matter of a month or two because so much of what we need is already in place there. It's really just tying into existing audio. We have some great cameras and we have ACTV to partner with who can do a lot of the, the video feed that we would need both to livestream and going into the Zoom.
Thank you. I, Mr. Mayor, just based on your comments, you're okay with questions and comments right now?
Oh, yes.
So I guess my, my only two cents, first, Amy, you've done a wonderful job since the pandemic and the shutdown of getting us into Zoom. And from my opinion, there were no bugs. You worked through it and one thing that you added that I'm hoping that will continue is the livestreaming to YouTube. Because while it's a small but mighty fan club, it, it, it actually is much more user-friendly than our own, our own city system that, if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me, you couldn't actually watch immediately after, it took some upload time before it was there. And so I think the streaming to YouTube, you know, is, is a wonderful addition. But I guess my, my comments would be, there are two things here, obviously, is we don't know when the executive order allowing the five of us to stop meeting virtually is going to end, or if that will ever end. In fact, from my perspective, the flexibilities it has allowed, some council members who don't have to be in their home offices can still interact in the meetings no differently with no, no changes in the public participation. And so the Brown Act requirements that require noticing at those other locations, to me, I think we've proven aren't needed. But that's going to require legislative change, I realize. But I guess my one piece of why I really would be especially wanting to see the hybrid model is beyond the flexibility of hopefully the five of us having that, is for the staff. It really allows for staff engagement, for them to be able to pop on and not have to give up their whole evening to, to sit through it, not just staff, but our stakeholders that join us. And so I really would encourage that even if the executive order ends and the five of us return to in-person, that we can reduce our capacity in the room by having staff, if they choose to, feel more comfortable, be virtual and/or our stakeholders. And so I would definitely love, love to see direction, if it's needed, to the city manager and to you to buy the technology you think is appropriate, to figure out how to get us there. And even if we got to work some bugs out in June or whenever that start is, we understand we're working some bugs out. The county is doing the hybrid model and it seems to work very well and gives a lot of flexibility to the staff that again, can't be there because of capacity or don't feel safe. And so I, I would really encourage us to, to go the hybrid model. I, for one, was not keen on it the last time we had the conversation, which may have been in December. But based on our hybrid abilities, I am comfortable in June returning to in-person meetings.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Riddell Harris, as her handle.
Thank you. I, I would, I want to piggyback on what Councilman Berlant was saying. I think that having that access remotely is going to be key. At the, at the city of Roseville, they're able to have consultants that can make presentations at a distance. They don't have to pay all the costs of having their consultants fly or drive and do all that extra cost just to get there when they could easily make the presentation remote. So I think there's a lot of advantages, even cost-wise, that we could get out of having that hybrid model available. And for moms like me, it's, it's great to be able to have that ability to still be in the house if there's something, if there's an emergency or somebody's sick or something like that. So I think that that's great that we have that option available. The thing I'm actually concerned about even more in some cases is our committee meetings, meeting in person in the building. I want to make sure that, I, I know that some of the committees have been kind of jumping the gun and starting some meetings in person. And I want to make sure that we're making it comfortable for all the members of that committee. I tried to call into one of the committee meetings and the technology isn't just not there. Right now, it's just a laptop, so you can't really hear what's going on in the room. So you feel like you kind of have to go. And in order to have enough spacing between people, it'd be very hard for people to hear you from a laptop. So I want to make sure that we're providing the guidelines to our committees as, as well if they're choosing to be in person and that they're following the guidelines that are currently in place. I know that everyone's eager to get back together and to talk about things, but I want to make sure that we're setting an example, especially in our own building, of following the rules and the guidelines that are applicable. And then once the 15th happens, then think everything will change and maybe we can have some more access to things. But I know that there was a meeting last week and there's one tomorrow that all it says is, hey, let's all meet in person and no guidelines at all around with how we're meeting or any health requirements or anything like that. So I just want to make sure those are all really clear to the committees, since we haven't, I don't know if we've defined them, and if we have, we just need to make sure it's clear to everyone in the committee. So that's my, that's my concern at this point.
Great, thank you very much. I see Councilwoman Dunn Calviou.
Yes, and just let you know, I have 6% battery left. So if I get kicked off, I'll have to go on my desktop. I support, you know, a hybrid model as well. I, I want to get back in, into the council chamber. So at the end of the day, I, I support that and I just wanted to vocalize that, the hybrid model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman DeMar.
Yes, I do support the hybrid model for, and, and also for city council as well because sometimes it is difficult, people work out of town and it would be an opportunity for us to also have that, have that ability to remotely appear. But also, I think on the staff report, correct me if I'm wrong, someone, one of the council persons said June, but I think the recommendation was for July 12th. Is that right, Amy?
Included that in the report because of the timing. You know, it's not the meeting directly after the June 15th announcement. It also, just as a clerk for record-keeping, feels like a fresh start when it's the first meeting of the fiscal year.
I agree. I agree, you don't have to justify it. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right. So, yeah, I, I would, I think the July date sounds good to me, so.
Sorry, I said June and it's even highlighted in the document in front of me, July, my apologies.
I think I said the same thing, I said June as well. But yeah, I mean, regardless, as quick as we can get back in to the in-person after the June 15th date, assuming that doesn't move or slide, so. I think that is all we have. We do have a couple of reports on the agenda, but considering the hour, I'm going to recommend that we postpone the reports until our next meeting. I will ask the council, last time I abruptly stopped things and that was not the right way. So anybody have any opposition to us postponing these last two items so we can adjourn this evening and maybe go have a quick bite to dinner? Anyway, okay, I see nodding, all looks good. Thank you all, sorry this ran so late, we had a lot of items to cover. I think it was a good meeting, I appreciate everybody's input and efforts. Take care, have a good night, meeting adjourned.
Bye.